Good morning and welcome to the January 27th meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Pine.
Here.
Supervisor Horsley.
Here.
Supervisor Tissier.
Here.
Supervisor Slougham. President Groom.
President. Thank you. Public comment. So now is the time for persons who wish to address the board on any county-related items that are not on this agenda meeting, listed on the consent calendar, the county manager's report, or the board members' report. So the first speaker is Martin Fox.
My fellow veterans, Supervisor Slougham and Mr. Malpey, and County Council Mr. Byers, thank you for your service to the county. Please vote to implement Laura's Law because it is an effective, efficient, and humane long-term solution to the problem of treatment-resistant serious mental illness. That is effective because it creates an incentive for families of persons living with serious mental illness to seek treatment for their loved one in a civil litigation setting that is free from the criminal justice stigma that using law enforcement as a mental health care system gatekeeper is associated with. Laura's Law is efficient because it supports family and community-based treatment that avoids the high cost of inpatient and in custody treatment, which uses dangerousness to self or others as a criteria for providing that treatment. Laura's Law is humane because it restores the capacity of a person who is so sick they cannot seek treatment, to the point that they can actually engage in treatment without family members having to deny them food, shelter, and clothing. To paraphrase our president's State of the Union message, all human life is important, including the lives of persons with adult onset mental illness, as well as their family members who now risk domestic violence, our psychiatric emergency room and inpatient psychiatric ward nurses who risk workplace violence, and our law enforcement officers who risk random acts of violence as the result of the threat and grave disability-based treatment policies and procedures. Laura's Law has been approved in Los Angeles, Orange, Placer, Yolo, and Nevada County, and even in the city and county of San Francisco last year. Over 14 million California residents have access to Laura's Law benefits now, and San Diego is expected to vote in favor of Laura's Law today on the 70th anniversary of the liberation of inmates at Auschwitz. Free persons imprisoned by serious mental illness that are so sick they cannot advocate for themselves by voting to implement Laura's Law in San Mateo County now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Teresa Dyer.
Good morning, county supervisors and staff. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Slougham for meeting with me on veterans' issues and would like him to join Jerry Hill this Friday at American Legion in San Bruno to hear the other veterans' complaints. Also, there will be a meeting at Fort Miley on March 11th with the director of the hospital at 5:00 p.m. Second, I would like to read a statement from the news media regarding the DA Steve Wagstaff. It simply says, "If there is an indication of a state law being broken, we will handle the case." So I'm wondering why he isn't doing what he said, or is he lying to the press? Now, you also have a serious problem within your judicial system, and I'm not only referring to family court, but small claims court, where a plaintiff was not notified by phone or mail to the next court date, when the judge could have issued in her favor because defendant committed perjury by saying he didn't have a warranty after I submitted one to the judge. Thank you.
Thank you. Wyn Gursic.
Hi, my name is Wyn Gursic, and I want to read something to you from Robert F. Kennedy. Laws can embody standards, governments can enforce laws, but the final task is not a task for the government, it is the task of each and every one of us. Every time we turn our heads the other way when we see a law flouted, when we tolerate what we know to be wrong, and when we close our eyes and our ears to the corrupt because we're too busy and too frightened. When we fail to speak up and speak out, we strike a blow against freedom and decency and justice. This is Robert F. Kennedy. What I came here today for is I had a flash drive and I had a little PowerPoint presentation, which I could have done in two minutes, but of course your machine wouldn't take it, but I did show it at Palo Alto City Council last night. And I gave two CDs, one that has 15 university studies on fluoride, why not to fluoridate? So it causes osteosarcomas, bone cancer, it causes dental fluorosis, it causes death. And secondly is the fact that what I gave the slideshow, I put it on public record, so I hope every one of you will download what I just put on public record and go for it because we need to get this back on the ballot. Jackie Spears wrote a bill in 1995, an amendment on a Safe Drinking Water Act, to fluoridate the rest of the state. You got your poison put in your water up to Redwood City in 2005. And Alameda County Water District purchases poison for your water, it's fluorocalic acid. I read here last year the material safety data sheet on fluorocalic acid, and you're not supposed to swallow it, and it's a hazardous waste product. I gave Jackie Spears the fluoride deception book, and I said to her, I said, "What makes drinking something with lead and arsenic safe to drink?" And she says, "I have to agree to disagree, there's numerous studies that reduces cavities." Do you think lead and arsenic's good for your children? Arsenic causes cancer. At 50 parts per billion, it kills 1 in 100 people with cancer. I have taken this to the Maxwell Water Board, and Mr. Woods on the Alameda County Water District actually cut the fluoride levels in half. If we can get the public behind this and you can lobby Jackie Spears, call her office and get this crap out of our water.
Thank you for being here this morning. Now we're going to have a couple of items where we're going to recognize people who have done outstanding work over the course of a year. And the first is the, oh, okay. We'd like to take action to set the agenda, improve the consent agenda items. So moved.
Set.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay.
Move, I think number one is administrative items, the President's resolution on how to delegate Harley group. You move to that consent. And I'd like to talk about that.
Do you want to talk about that?
I guess not. So the other two items was, I'd like to discuss just briefly the Bicycle Advisory Committee, number 12. And then, while I'm voting in favor of the IHSS contract, I would like to make a comment about that.
Damn it.
I'm saying, I'd like to make a comment about addendum one, which is the IHSS contract.
So I would ask the Health Department, is it all right if we move item number one to consent, or did you want to comment on it? What was the next item?
I'm sorry, number 12, which is the Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Okay.
And then I'd just like to make a comment about the addendum we made to our agenda concerning the IHSS.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so Supervisor Tissier, number one will go to consent.
Correct.
Is that all right with you?
Yes, that's fine.
And we will take 12 and IHSS separately.
All right. With those, we'll move to set the agenda into approve consent items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's do 12 right now, please.
On item 12, as I understand it, there's a pressing need to put in place a Bicycle Advisory Committee so we can avail ourselves of some grant opportunities. And I think we never want to miss those opportunities, and it seems like it's expeditious to, as a first step, or definitely an interim step, to make the Parks Commission this Bicycle Advisory Commission. However, I'm not sure in the longer run whether, you know, that's the right embodiment of kind of the bicycle community and kind of, you know, the needs of bicyclists, our interest in bicycling, the growing use of bikes as a mode of transportation. You know, I really kind of see it distinct from the Parks and Rec Commission. So I guess my suggestion for today would be that, you know, that we revisit kind of the permanent organization of our Bicycle Committee. But I think in the short term, it makes sense to kind of keep it where it is, so we can keep the pace going.
Supervisor Pine, we did decide that we would form that, we would send this responsibility to the Park and Rec Commission for the first couple of months, so grants that are in the pipeline can be formed, and then we will put together a little task force to figure out who should be on a permanent bike committee.
Yeah, that would be great. I think we can find some very interested people to do that work.
Supervisor Horsley.
Just make a quick comment. I was on the, I'm on the CPACs or the CAGS B-PAC, and when we were looking at the MTC's requirement for application for grant, to be eligible for a grant, you have to have a B-PAC. And so I expeditionally put this together because there has been a call for projects now, and so this is an interim solution, and we would, we'll come back and revisit it as soon as the call for projects is completed.
Okay, that sounds like a good approach. I'll go ahead and move in favor of this interim approach.
No, second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to do IHSS next?
Oh, sure. I just sort of want to make a brief statement about the IHSS contract, which I will be voting in favor of. But I did want to take a second to acknowledge the work again of the IHSS providers, which we all are aware of how important they are in our community. And also just acknowledge the low-wage workers in general in our county, this is a very expensive place to live, and we have a lot of people doing important work for very little wages. So while, you know, I'm disappointed where we came out, I do look forward to opportunities in the future to deal with poverty and low wages in the county, and I just want to articulate three. One, I know Supervisor Groom, in her remarks upon taking the presidency, would, you know, emphasize the livable wage discussion, which I look forward to having with the board. You know, secondly, I would urge that our internal advocacy, government advocacy group, you know, stay very focused on the state and federal funding for IHSS, because as we all know, it's a very strange, you know, it's a very strange system where there's multiple funders, and if we can get the state and feds to, if they increased as much as we increase, things would be substantially better. And then, you know, thirdly, too, you know, to the extent we can help our IHSS workers with outreach to, or enrollment in ACA and Medi-Cal, that would also be something that, you know, perhaps we could take a little extra mile there to try to encourage those signups. So I just wanted to make those remarks, and I can go ahead and move the, move the mic.
Let me make one comment, that in the governor's budget, he did return the 7% cut to IHSS that he did several years ago, and he is working on a funding mechanism for that. So there's a potential that the 7% will be returned.
So I'll move in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much Supervisor Pine. Now we'll go to presentations and awards, and begin with the 2014 Women in County Government Honorees. Women in County Government started well over 20 years ago as a forum to assist women who were just joining the government ranks, mentor them so that they could be prepared for more supervisory and management positions. And I think at this time, we've made great progress and have a number of women in San Mateo County who have achieved high positions, and we still work with women who are entering the workforce to get them on a track to become supervisors and managers. So at a Women in Government luncheon last year, four women were honored with their work, and we want to honor them today. So the first person is the Rookie of the Year, Ava Carter. Is she with us today?
Yep.
And our second honoree is for development of self and others, Assistant Sheriff Tricia Sanchez. Third category is public service and community service, the extra mile, Brigitte Santiago. Congratulations to you all, and keep up the good work. Now I'd like to introduce Rocio from Human Serv-, the HR Department, who is going to discuss our Stars Awards.
Good morning, President Groom, members of the board, Mr. Malpey, Mr. Byers. I'm Rocio Kirkson from the Human Resource Department. It's a pleasure to be here today to introduce this year's Stars Awards Honorees. This morning, we'll have presentations from representatives from five programs that are being recognized by your board for their excellent contributions to our organization as well as our community. Following their presentations, we'll introduce the employees receiving awards for their ideas to enhance county services. In terms of some background, the Stars Program was launched nine years ago, and it serves to recognize excellence within our organization. We currently have four award categories. We have program performance, customer service, green, and employee suggestions. This year, we received 16 programs submissions from 10 departments. These entries were reviewed by two internal teams based on established criteria. The teams identified the following programs to receive awards. For the program performance, we have the Health Systems Depression Screening for Diabetics and Countywide Wellness Committee. For customer service, we have Service Connect, which is a collaboration between Health System, Human Services Agency, Probation, and the Sheriff's Office. And for the green award, we have the Health Systems Way to Go Program, as well as the Sheriff's Activities League, the Clean Team. And so now we'll begin with the presentations. We'll start with the Health Systems Depression Screening for Diabetics. And this morning, we have Liz Evans, Dr. Dave Lynn, Dr. Samuda Kalra here today to make the presentation.
Good morning, my name is Norris Larkin, I'm the charge nurse of the Innovative Care Clinic, and I'm representing Liz Evans today. I want to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to present our model of medical psychiatry services at Innovative Care Clinic, diabetes and depression care model. We would like to bring your attention to some general statistics about diabetes. In 2014, 29.1 million diabetics were in the United States, 9.3% of the general population. 22% of San Mateo Medical Center primary care patients were diagnosed with diabetes in 2014. The estimated cost in the U.S. in 2014 was $176 billion in direct medical costs, and $46 billion in indirect medical costs and sick dates. Therefore, this model was created.
Good morning, I'm Dr. Samantha Kalra, I'm the medical director at the Innovative Care Clinic. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity. I wanted to explain a little bit about the process when patients do come in. So out of 1,560 patients that are in ICC that were identified as having diabetes, they would come in, our medical assistant would then give them a piece of paper called a PHQ9, which is a series of questions for them to answer and identify how they're doing in terms of their mood. 780 of those patients were screened for depression, and 180 of them were positive for depression. Once they reached a certain score, they were entered into the computer, the provider would then come in, review that with the patient, and identify them if they needed to be seen. If they needed to be seen, a referral was then placed into our psychiatry team, and they would take over trying to get the patient in for an intake and then follow them. 92 of those patients were treated. So it's an amazing collaboration between psychiatry services, the primary care team, the providers that are in our clinic, and with that, we were able to start helping patients take better care of themselves and better care of their depression, and eventually, hopefully, of their diabetes.
Hi, I'm Dr. David Lynn, and I'm the supervising psychologist over at the Medical Center, and thank you very much, this is a great honor to be here. One of the great aspects about the program was how the team of psychiatry and primary care really banded together, and we really feel like the quality was met for the patients that we serve. And I think the quality is amazing here at San Mateo. You know, to be able to get a warm handoff and to be seen with a psychiatry visit within 30 minutes, the referral, walking out with an appointment in hand is huge. And the patients themselves felt secure, they felt like they were getting well-served, and they actually were, once they had the connection, felt more comfortable coming back. The staff itself actually felt very much supported, because this is a can of worms that most providers don't want to open up, because it ends up being a lot lengthier than average. But knowing that psychiatry was backing them up, they had no fears to go forward. And finally, I think one of the best things is that through the Medi-Cal waiver, we were able to help, bring in some funding for the Medical Center. So over a period of about three years, we brought in about 1.5 million to help the Medical Center out. And so with this great program, our goal is to simply expand it and roll it out to the other clinics and continue to serve these patients as best as we can. And again, thank you for this honor to be here today.
Don't go away. Don't go away. I have the great honor of presenting this award for outstanding program performance to the three of you, so thank you for your great work.
Next, we have the Wellness Committee, and this morning Pamela Gibson and Manuela Sugers are here to make a presentation.
I'm flying solo today, so, thank you, members of the board, thank you, Mr. Malpey, thank you, Mr. Byers, and to fellow grantees, we're just delighted to be receiving this recognition and honor today. The Wellness Committee formed in 2011, about six months after you approved our county wellness policy. The purpose of our committee is to implement the policy and to work on creating a culture of health within our organization. Quite simply, we have an awesome group of people who are really invested in this idea and notion that we want to make the county a healthier place to be. Not only in helping our employees improve their health, but creating a supportive work environment that allows the healthy choice to be the easy choice. And in our application, we listed a couple of our accomplishments over the past three or four years. On the employee basis, we've seen an increase of wellness screenings from under 500 to over 2,400 in the period of the last four years. Some of the other improvements are things like 90% of our departments now have wellness champions, 70% of our departments are now getting wellness grant funds that they can spend on their employees to provide their own wellness services. You'll see, when you go into most of our stairwells, these lovely signs, have you seen these signs? Yeah, encouraging stairwell use. We have more lactation programs, and many departments are even now creating quiet rooms for their staff so that they can rest and refocus if they've had a difficult moment at work. These are just some of the examples of organizationally or as a committee, what we've been working on, and departments have made many other changes that really reflect their culture and their unique operations. A 9 to 5 operation is going to have different health and wellness needs than a 24/7 operation. So the wellness grant monies that our departments are receiving can be used and funneled in ways that enable employees to see, feel, and experience wellness every day. I just wanted to thank some folks in the audience. There are several people who are here, can we raise your hand? Yay! First off, we have some external providers, Kaiser, Blue Shield, Concern. They come to our meetings, they support our efforts, they help us with solutions, and I just want to call out their support and commitment, and unfailing commitment. Secondly, we have a number of technical advisors within the county who support our efforts, people like the food service providers, and Ava, you're here still, yay, from the cafeteria, from our vending machines, from our catering. They're all embracing this notion of bringing healthier choices to our food service operations. The facilities people who help install the banners and signs and help support our efforts, and especially to Dr. Scott Morrow, who is an awesome guy, and really, we count on him for many good things. Lastly, I want to recognize all of the department wellness champions. They are, they are the people who should be celebrated today, and they're the ones who are making a difference in our county. So lastly, I just want to let you know with the funds that we'll be receiving, most of those funds will be directly plowed right back into the departments. We're going to be providing free wellness trainings and support through our wellness program back to the departments, and they'll let us know what they want. So thank you for this recognition, thank you for your support, thank you for the Stars Program. It's a great opportunity to show programs and let them shine, so thank you very much. Wellness Committee, you want to come up? Please. I have just some couple of representatives.
Thank you, Pam. Our next presenter is Carlos Morales from Service Connect.
Good morning, my name is Carlos Morales, I'm Clinical Service Manager with Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. And I just want to start off and thank the Review Committee for selecting Service Connect, and the Board of Supervisors, and the County Manager, Mr. Malpey, for awarding Service Connect a Stars Award for Customer Services. I also want to take this opportunity to thank our multi-agency partnerships, which begins with our lead agency, the Probation Department, the Sheriff's Office, Correctional Health. In addition, I would like to thank all the AOD, CBOs, community-based organizations, and mental health agencies and social services that Service Connect refers clients to. Without our partners, we would not exist. I would like to just take a brief moment to describe the staff and the program description, but before I do that, I would like to acknowledge Service Connect Supervisors Kristi Baker and Michael Peyton for setting a collaborative tone and leading Service Connect on a day-to-day basis, and I know that's no easy task. Service Connect staff are ethnically diverse and have many years of professional experience. Many of the staff are formerly incarcerated individuals who are Many of the staff are formerly incarcerated individuals who are modeling pro-social behaviors. Service Connect staff are engaging, compassionate, and at the same time, they're able to hold clients accountable for their behavior and challenge their criminal thinking once they've established a trustful, respectful relationship. And with the forensic population, trust and respect are paramount. Our customer service strategies, we practice rapid engagement, we do warm handoffs. Currently, right now, there's a warm handoff going on where someone's escorting a person from McGuire to probation and then to Service Connect for services. We also have a same-day assistance program, no waiting. You walk into the facility, you have meters and greeters who assist with filling out intake paperwork, self-administered screening tools, and they can also triage for urgent care issues. The staff have created a welcoming environment, and I invite you to visit. They have a drop-in area with coffee and snacks, client computers for job search and resume building. There's meals, there's actual kitchen downstairs at 550 Quarry, and we offer a menu of services. As a person comes in, emergency service bundle if they need it, food, shelter, clothing, help with transportation. And I want to highlight some of the key strategies from the Human Service Agency. They have 550 jobs, and to me, this is really important. It's immediate subsidized employment. If you come out and you want a job, you can get a job that same day. Before the subsidized program, there was very few takers that wanted to go through the process, but after 550 jobs was developed, I think it has something like a 91% rate of signup. And this job helps for learning soft skills, gaining employment history, and then they have referrals to full-time jobs. HSA also provides peer support groups. Clients can receive mentorship and formerly incarcerated peers who have successfully re-entered the community. Support groups offer a network of help during challenging times. They also offer family engagement, which is really important. Clients supported and provided opportunities to reconnect with their kids and family members. On the Behavioral Health and Recovery side of the house, we offer alcohol and other drug counseling onsite. We have AOD individual group services, our AOD counselors are certified. We have referrals to AOD residential, intensive outpatient outpatient, and case management's provided. We also have psychiatric services onsite. Psychiatric social workers available for therapy and case management, and we have a psychiatrist with onsite office hours. We have referrals for warm handoffs to providers at different levels of care. And we also, what I'm really pleased to see is we have medical services onsite. We have clients can receive medical services through a mobile health van, and clients have access to a nurse practitioner for ongoing medical needs along with a primary and specialty care referral, so they can get somebody to a PCP rather quickly. Service Connect begins this process with identifying serious medical conditions during the re-entry planning process, and we do the follow-up and continuity of care. In a nutshell, I just want to say that our kind of goal and our service, our customer service strategies are, we have engaging staff who have developed a client-centered culture that strives to engage moderate and high-risk offenders in treatment and social services to end recidivism. Thank you.
Patel and Maeve Johnston to make the presentation.
On behalf of the Way to Go Team, we would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for recognizing our program. My name is Hetal Patel, I'm a Program Coordinator for the Health Administration Department. I am the Lead on Employee Transportation Demand Management, including the Lead on Way to Go.
Good morning. My name's Maeve Johnston, and I'm a Community Health Planner with the Health Systems Health Policy and Planning Program, and I'm the former Lead for the Way to Go Program. We began the Way to Go Program first to encourage employees to use healthy modes to get to work, to reduce the environmental impact of solo driving, and of course, to alleviate our parking problem. In 2012, we conducted a survey with regional commute agencies and found that 70% of our employees drive alone to work. We also found that many people are interested in alternatives to driving alone but aren't sure where to start. So, the Way to Go Program was initiated to share resources, build skills, and connect employees who need help exploring a new way to work.
So, our annual surveys show the success and growing reach of our program. Last year, 16% of our survey respondents said way-to-go activities influenced their commute to work. This has been a 14% increase since our first year. When we first started, we found that an average health system employee used more than 300 gallons of gasoline and emitted 7,000 pounds of carbon dioxide each year to get to work. To give you a perspective of this, that's equivalent to two adult elephants. After the first year of our program, employees burned 50 gallons less of gas and emitted 900 pounds fewer of carbon dioxide on their trips to work. Some of our program highlights include that we offer a free customized commute planning. Based on our employee feedback, we hired a custom commute expert who visits our health system once a month to help staff explore and plan alternatives. These include carpooling and vanpooling. Staff actually leave them appointments feeling more confident with more options to help them feel less stressed and more willing to use the alternative modes of transportation to get to work. Way to Go also renovated and created a secured parking area, which we call our Bike Spa, to encourage employees to ride their bike to work. This helped increase the number of bike trips to work by 9%. In 2013, our survey results showed that 30% of employees expressed they would use alternative modes of transportation if they had more access to county cars. So, Way to Go has launched a car sharing and reservation software on a pilot group of vehicles, which allows health system employees to have easier access to a larger pull of county cars for work-related trips. As we continue to expand and improve our program, we are starting some new and exciting projects. This spring, we will be launching a fleet of bikes for the Health System campus at 37th Avenue to encourage staff to bike to meetings at different locations and also bike during their breaks for physical activity. We hope to reduce the driving trips between campuses. We are very proud of the success of Way to Go, and we want to reach as many health system employees as we can through our new and existing initiatives. Thank you.
Our final presenters this morning, Barbara Bonilla and Mason Locke from the Sheriff's Activities League.
The Clean Team and Green Team is a Sheriff's Activities Youth Leadership and Mentoring Program that focuses on keeping North Fair Oaks clean and free of illegal dumping and graffiti, while also doing outreach and education to residents and business owners on how to report illegal dumping, graffiti, and resources for proper disposal of waste. We'd like to thank Supervisor Slocum and Sheriff Greg Monks, because without their support, we wouldn't be able to institute the program for its pilot this summer. And we'd also like to thank the Board of Directors, or Supervisors, excuse me, for recognizing our program this morning. We have given all of you an overview of what the program did during their pilot this summer, and I'm going to bring up Mason Locke, who's the Program Leader, to briefly summarize their accomplishments for this summer and what they're doing currently. Mason?
Good morning. Just to continue the summary of the kind of what the program was, some of the target locations that we kind of focused around, we're in the North Fair Oaks area, kind of around the busier sections of North Fair Oaks, for example, Middlefield or any of the schools. And the results from that program over the summer was a total of 36 trash bags throughout the Middlefield Road only. We were able to collect about six trash bags per day throughout that community, and 18 total trash bags for the neighborhood clean, so more of the neighborhoods throughout North Fair Oaks. We also passed out 500 educational flyers, just to let the community know and the small businesses that were there and if they want to get involved. And we also reported five different areas of graffiti where there was multiple tags along the walls or just road signs. On top of that, there were also 15 different areas of illegal dumping reported, so things such as mattresses, tires, or just bulky items that we couldn't take care of. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and just to follow up, we're really proud of all these kids, and we have a group, the Clean Team, are the leaders to the Green Team, who are elementary school kids, and we feel that this program is really helping them take on the problem of illegal dumping and trash down in North Fair Oaks, and teaching them to be responsible, which is also helping us educate the parents and the families in the area. So, the funds that we receive today will be going back into supporting the program for this fall. Right now, they do two Saturdays a month, so one day is spent on Middlefield Road, the same as the Wednesdays prior. In the morning, they do a Middlefield Road cleanup, and then they do outreach and education into the neighborhood that they'll be cleaning up the following Saturday. So, we'll be doing that for the rest of the year until summer, and then we'll go back to the other schedule for summer. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Barbara and Mason, before we do the photography here, let me just thank you and Mason and Sheriff Monks and under Sheriff Bulanos for their support of this program. You know, I read here that there were some 3,360 gallons of litter picked up in North Fair Oaks along Middlefield and the other location, and that's a lot of, that's a lot of illegal dumping. So, I think the kids did a great job. I was very proud to be a part of this. And let me just introduce a member of your Board of Directors for the Sheriff's Activity League, who's sitting here in the front row, Kirk McGowan. Thank you, Kirk, and the Board, and Barbara, and the Sheriff, for all your work, it's appreciated.
Now, we'll move into the Employee Suggestion Award. So, this year, we received 20 suggestions, and all the suggestions came through via YAMR, and once they were received, they were reviewed by departments to determine viability, feasibility. And as a result, we have four employees that are being recognized today for their excellent suggestions. We have Allison Loggia from the Human Resources Department, and her suggestion is to expand the county's internship program to include panel series with county executives. We have Heather Oda from Public Works, and her suggestion is to create a skin cancer awareness initiative. Julie Goble from the Human Resource Department, her idea is to explore expanding the county's volunteer benefits for employees that include pet insurance at discounted rates. And then lastly, Marissa King, also from the Human Resources Department, and her suggestion is to enhance the county's recruiting efforts by posting job openings on departmental websites, webpages. So, President Groom will present the accommodations and awards to these employees. As I call your name, please come on up. Okay? And so, we'll start with Allison Loggia. Thank you, and congratulations to all the award recipients, and a special thank you to your Board and the County Manager's Office. Greatly appreciate the continued support.
Well, we'd like to thank you for all your hard work organizing this, managing it, and gathering everybody here today. No easy task. So, thank you, Rosio. We have one speaker item, but, and who is suggesting to us several other people that should have been honored today, and we take your advice and thank you. This is an internal program that nominations are made, and we have nothing to do with any of it, except celebrate the awardees. So, with that, we need a resolution approving the Stars recipients, as well as authorizing appropriation transfer request in the amount of $62,500 from non-departmental and health system to various program accounts to the Stars Awards.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, we will go to item number four, which is resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations in the amount of $26,130 for 2014-15 from the Friends of Hudert and Wonderlic Parks. And Marlene Finley is, there you are.
Good morning, Board members, President Groom, Manager Malpe, and Council Byers. I'm delighted today to introduce Leah Goldstein and Lisa Raskin from the Friends of Hudert and Wonderlic, who are here today to give a generous donation to the Parks Department. They're going to share a little bit about the work they do in support of parks, and then that will be followed by Julia Bott from the San Mateo County Parks Foundation, Executive Director, with a donation coming in from the foundation. That's next. Okay. Lisa and Leah? Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you to the Supervisors and County Manager, County Council, for giving us the opportunity to speak with you this morning. My name's Leah Goldstein, and Lisa Raskin and I are co-presidents of the Friends of Hudert and Wonderlic Parks. We're a nonprofit organization that was formed in 2002 to promote environmental awareness and education through community participation in the preservation and enjoyment of our county parks. We assist park rangers to maintain the parks and conduct educational programs through the development, management, and financial support of community volunteer efforts. We host school field trips in each of the parks with docent-led hikes for kindergarteners and first graders at Hudert, and docent-led history curriculum activities for third and fourth graders at Wonderlic Park. We also give guided tours of the historic district at Wonderlic, which is on the National Register of Historic Places. The tours include a visit to the historic docent-staffed museum, which is housed in the historic Folger Stable. We actually recently gave a tour to Assemblyman Gordon's staff, and we welcome and would invite you to bring your staff to the parks. The Friends spearheaded a capital fundraising campaign that resulted in the restoration of the historic Folger Stable in 2010. But we had not done any fundraising since that. But we had not done any fundraising since that time. However, in the fall, just last year, in two thousand and fourteen, we held a very successful second fundraising event, which we called Carts to Cars, to raise money for improvement projects that had been identified by the County Parks Department. The projects included an upgraded horse-riding arena, improved picnic area, and new bathroom facilities at Wonderlic Park, and a new playground structure at Hutter Park. Carts to Cars was a fun, sold-out event that featured horse-drawn carriages, vintage autos, and the latest in high-performance vehicles to demonstrate the significance of horsepower for our transportation needs. The Friends are pleased to be able to contribute twenty-six thousand one hundred and three dollars to these projects as a result of the event. So I just want to take a moment. In our day jobs, Lisa is a scientist, and I am a psychologist. In those roles, we both understand the importance of outdoor experiences and education that touches both adults and children alike for the promotion of physically and mentally healthy lifestyles. So we are very appreciative for the opportunities that San Mateo County Parks Department has been giving us to partner with them in two of the county's most beautiful parks. We're glad to be able to assist Marlene Finley and the County Parks Department staff in bringing all that Hutter and Wonderlic has to offer to the community. So I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for accepting the Friends donation. We'd like to present this check to you in our ongoing efforts to support the wonderful work you do for the people of San Mateo County. Thank you.
Thank you. It's always so difficult, it's always so difficult accepting money, isn't it?
It is. But before you go, I actually was hiking in Wonderlic this past weekend, and I've spent time at the Folger Stave as well. And I used to spend a lot of time in Hutter when my son was in Cub Scouts. And so both parks are really remarkable. For people who haven't seen them, you really need to go to both places. But one of the things that happens that occurs to me, like at Wonderlic, is unfortunately, there's not a lot of parking. And so I was here this last weekend, and there's cars all over the place. And I mean, there's nothing we can do about it. You really, you know, you can't really destroy the park to build a parking garage. But it also, what it demonstrates is that all of our facilities, all of our park facilities, are such a draw for residents, not only from San Mateo County, but from other areas. So I was with people who were from San Francisco, and they had never been here before. But they're going to, they'll go back, and they'll tell other people, what a remarkable place this is. And so thanks for your involvement with both parks.
Supervisor Horstley, you were hiking in the park?
Yes, I was. I was.
Very, very.
Yes, I was. And I've camped out with Cub Scouts at Hutter. So I know, and I've hiked Hutter Park as well. It's really, both of them are, they were at one time all log, but they're all second-generation redwoods. And, you know, the forest is really being restored in those areas. So when you see those redwoods, they almost look as if, as the forest would have looked several hundred years ago.
Thank you. Let me make the motion, then, with that, to accept, is it twenty-six thousand one hundred and thirty dollars from the Friends of Hutter and Wonderlic Park. Thank you so much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks again. Now we will ask Marlene to rejoin us and for another gift.
I apologize in my enthusiasm for getting ahead of myself here. I'd love to introduce Julia Bott, the Executive Director of the San Mateo County Parks Foundation, who is accompanied by some of the board members today to offer a generous donation for the parks.
Thank you, Marlene. Supervisors, as Marlene said, I'm the Executive Director of the San Mateo County Parks Foundation. After seventeen years, that's no surprise to anybody. I do want to introduce some members of our board that are both in the audience and on the dais. We have our Chair, Mary DeLong, who also has a history of working with the Friends of Fitzgerald. We have Lyndal Earp, who is an equestrian also, and involved in many equestrian groups, as well as some other interesting endeavors. And then we have Supervisor Dave Pine. And so I'm pleased, as you know, without a Board of Directors, a lot of work in nonprofits does not get done. So really, we really appreciate their help. Now, this donation today is an aggregate of a range of gifts, from one large donation, as you know, we have one donor who favors Coyote Point, to many small gifts. It represents gifts from local businesses, from foundations, and from the community. And really, the community that supports the parks is very warming. We get great notes on the donations that come in about how much they love the parks. And there is really no need to go outside of this county if you want to see redwoods, absolutely. Or just about anything, if you want. I think, isn't that the county's model? All California in one county or something? You can see it here. So to gather these gifts, help us, help the parks implement their strategic plan to create active and engaged communities around parks. Now, these improvements range in a variety of projects. They include improvements to the beach picnic area adjacent to a brand-new playground at Coyote Point, the Pirate Playground. And if you haven't been there, I urge you to go and let out your inner pirate. It's a really simple playground, not a lot of bells and whistles, but that's great, because that really encourages play and imagination and make-believe, which is really great for cognitive development of our kids. Also, it supports the volunteer program. That was our first gift ever, and it remains our priority today, and an important way to engage the community in our parks. It supports the Student Conservation Association crews, also a way to get youth into the parks. A lot of them don't understand wildland parks, and we want to be able to have them become the stewards of the future. And some of the Student Conservation Association crew members have gone on to get jobs in the county parks. One crew leader is now a ranger. So this is a success program, a succession program, and something that we are really proud to support. And of course, we continue supporting educational improvements, interpretive improvements at Edgewood, including some deep cleaning of the exhibits that were put in three years ago. You know, you have these great exhibits, but if they're dusty and dirty when people come in, they're not going to be inclined to think they're soaked. They won't have the wow factor. So we have a commitment to maintaining those, and that's part of what this donation was. In addition to these funds, we do look forward to coming to you in the future with some other ones. We are holding just about a half a million dollars right now for Phase Two of the promenade at Coyote Point. We also have just under fifty thousand to help with the fish barrier removal at Pescadero Creek and Memorial. That's a cooperative project between the San Mateo County Resource Conservation District and the county parks. We have some funds where we're paying for transportation for underserved schools and youth groups to get in to the parks for these docent and ranger-led programs. And in fact, we are just working with Sienna Youth Center right now to get the youth out to San Pedro Park on Friday, March thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth, for a night hike that interpretive specialist ranger Catherine Wright is going to lead. So we're really happy to be able to start getting the youth into the parks. Finally, we really appreciate everyone's support, the community's support, the Friends Group's support, the department's support, and your support. It makes a big difference in the work that we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia.
And I'd like to make a motion to accept the donations from the San Mateo County Parks and Recs Foundation. And Julia, thank you so much for your great work, as well as your board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent.
May I make just a comment, too? I just wanted to express to Julia and to the board that it's really been interesting and a productive year for the foundation. You know, not only is the foundation a fundraising arm, but it's a remarkable, there's a remarkable job in outreach and bringing people to the parks and informing people about the parks. The emails that go out, the newsletters that go out, you know, really get the message out. And so many of the donations are just focused on getting people in those parks, learning about our parks, learning about nature. So I think it's been a very productive year for the foundation, and I enjoy being a small part of it. Thank you.
And I think I also need to make a motion to appropriate the transfer request, the amount of fifty-two thousand five hundred, from unanticipated revenue to the Parks Acquisition and Development Fund.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I want to also remind everybody that we're a couple months away from two thousand and fifteen Take a Hike program. So check the website of the county and the website of the Park Department. And please join us on Saturday morning when we take a wonderful hike and, again, spend some time in the county's beautiful parks. Okay, now we're going to item number six, which is a public hearing to consider the county's two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty-two housing element. Mr. Monowitz.
Good morning, President Groom, members of the board, Mr. Malpe, and Mr. Byers. Pleased to present to you today our proposed update to the county's general plan housing element. We're very lucky to have on the Planning and Building Department's staff, Mr. William Gibson, who's been working on housing element issues for the department for the past seven or eight years and is our department expert on the matter. So I'd like to ask Mr. Gibson to make the presentation today.
Thank you, Steve. There are some comments that came in the last minute. One set of comments from the San Mateo County Association of Realtors, which I believe came directly to the supervisors, so you have seen those, but I printed them out just in case. And one comment that came in over the weekend from a citizen who was concerned with a separate issue, but wanted to comment on the housing element as well. So again, I'm William Gibson. This item is an update to the county's housing element, the housing element of the general plan. And what I would like to do is just briefly talk about the housing element itself, its content, and its purpose. Talk a little bit about the requirements of the update and our process for doing the update. Highlight some of the key changes between this housing element and the prior housing element, and then talk a little bit about the next steps going forward. So the housing element is the... We're jumping around a little bit. There we go. The housing element is the part of the county's general plan that assesses the county's need for housing, identifies available sites for housing production, and incorporates a range of existing and new policies to meet the county's housing needs and housing goals. We're required to have a housing element by state law, and we are also required to update it on a schedule established by the state. And unlike many of the portions of the general plan and our other county documents, the state must also review and approve of our housing element. And the housing element on adoption will replace our existing housing element, and it will cover the period from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty-two. And the housing element not only is required, but the contents are largely mandated by the state of California as well. And the contents that are required are, as shown here, we must have an evaluation of the prior housing element. We must have an assessment of the county's housing needs. We must have an analysis of the constraints to housing production in San Mateo County. An analysis, again, of the adequate sites that we have for housing production. A set of goals, policies, and measurable objectives to meet our needs, and an action plan. And very importantly, a key component, and arguably the most important component of the housing element, is that we must demonstrate that the county can meet its share of the regional housing needs allocation, or RENA, which is the portion of housing need that ABAG, the state, the Association of Bay Area Governments, and the jurisdictions in San Mateo County together have determined are our share of units that are needed over the next eight years. And I'm going to come back to the RENA requirement in just a moment, but that is a key portion of the housing element. In terms of the update, we have been working intermittently and more and more consistently on the housing element update for the prior two years. We've participated in the Countywide Twenty-One Elements Collaborative, which is a forum for the county and the various twenty jurisdictions within the county to work together on the housing element update, sharing resources, sharing knowledge. Through that process, we've participated in a number of expert and stakeholder forums on housing issues, which have informed the update. We've held four public meetings on the update, two prior to creation of the draft housing element, and two after creation of the draft. We had an online survey, which we published, on housing issues and took into account that feedback. Talked directly with stakeholders and advocates and other experts, and that feedback also informed the draft. And we also worked closely with our Housing Department, who's a partner on this update, to create the draft that you have before you now. Since we only fairly recently adopted the existing housing element, we did feel that our approach to this project is essentially to review and revise, but to base the new housing element on the existing element. We adopted the last housing element actually in two thousand and twelve. And that process was a comprehensive and fairly intensive process. We had a steering committee leading that. Supervisor Pine was a member of that steering committee. We had a technical advisory committee. We really looked very closely at the policies and the programs, the analysis in the housing element, and really drilled down on what needed to be changed in a comprehensive revision at that point. Because that was so recently done, we felt that most of the policies, most of the programs, most of the analysis does remain current. That being said, we did take a very close look at all parts, as we were required to do, of the housing element. All the data has been updated, all the needs assessment has been updated. But we do feel that the policies and programs that were adopted by the board so recently largely remain appropriate, and most of them have been retained, as is, with some key exceptions. So, and turning just to what those exceptions are. So some of the key changes in the housing element, again, I mentioned the regional housing needs allocation. The regional housing needs allocation is, again, the number of units by income level that we are required to plan for over the next eight years. And what that means is that we must show that we have sufficient developable sites to account for that number of units. We don't have to provide that those be built, but we do have to provide that the sites are available for that type of development to occur. Last housing element cycle, we were required to show that we could plan for fifteen hundred units. And this cycle, that number is lower. As you can see here, it's nine hundred and thirteen units. And so we must show that we have enough available developable sites over the next eight years to accommodate nine hundred and thirteen units. And those are broken down by income level, as you can see here in the column Units Needed. That's our need by income level. The capacity is in the next column. And so as you can see, the analysis that we undertook for the housing element shows that we do have sufficient sites for each one of those income categories. Just two notes on this. I wanted to point out that in the staff report, the moderate income capacity number says one twenty-five. That's just a typo. It's actually a hundred and four, as shown here. Second, since we published the staff report and since we provided these numbers, working with the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District, we actually identified another approximately eighty sites, all in the above moderate income category, that are, actually have open space protections of some kind or another, and are not appropriate for the inventory. So we will need to remove those before we go forward and before we submit it to the state and before the board would adopt it. However, because we have such a high capacity in the above moderate category, that doesn't impact our ability to meet the regional housing needs allocation in any way. Turning to some of the other changes, as I said, most parts of the housing element remain substantially the same. The goals in the housing element are all, as shown here, are all unchanged. The policies and programs are largely unchanged, but there are a few exceptions. There are some new policies that are included, one of which is an analysis of potential areas for affordable housing overlay zones, which is a special kind of zoning that provides additional incentives for developers to provide additional affordable housing. Another is exploration of pre-approved development prototypes for smaller substandard lots. We'd explore the potential to provide that to ease development of those types of lots. Another, which I believe is, yes, it is shown on the next page, actually, the analysis of appropriate policies to incentivize tiny houses, which are quite popular now, and provide an option for people to have a much cheaper type of development. Adoption of an internal housing policy training program for county staff. We found during the last housing element and this update that many of the staff in many of the departments, including our own department and some of the other departments that actually need to work with these policies, are not quite aware of what is contained in the housing element and how those policies apply. So we would, going forward, provide training to those staff so that they know how this interacts with their work. And finally, consideration of MTC and ABAG's One Bay Area And finally, consideration of MTC and ABAG's One Bay Area program and other development funding programs as a potentially displacing impact. So when we take those funds, when we apply for them and use them, they can provide needed development, but they can also have impacts on existing residents, and we need to consider those in the decisions we make on development funding. In addition to new policies, a number of policies in the housing elements are either complete or are no longer appropriate and have been discontinued, and those include the emergency shelter zoning policy, which the board adopted near the end of last year, the transitional and supportive housing policy, which the board actually adopted today, the Northworks Community Plan, which was called out in the prior housing element and has been completed. We did an analysis of whether there are regulatory barriers in the county's policies and regulations to the use of shared housing or the creation of SRO housing. And finally, the last housing element committed us to provide additional resources for code enforcement, and that has been done. So, and just, as a side note, I know the Board of Supervisors received a white paper on housing issues from the county manager's office fairly recently, and our department contributed to that, as well as the housing department, the health department, and real property, and perhaps others. Not all of the policies in the housing element are in that paper, not all of the policies in that paper are in the housing element, and that's just to point out that, while the housing element is pretty comprehensive and does include an extensive array of policies, not every policy the county works on, and not every policy that is in the broader array of the county's housing work is contained, nor should it be contained in the housing element. So some of the things that you are seeing in that white paper are not in here, and vice versa. So, just, oh, and we prepared an initial study and negative declaration for this project stating that there is no negative environmental impact of the project, and the planning department also reviewed this on December seventeenth and recommended that the board direct us to submit it to the state of California for their review. And that brings us to the next steps. Because the state must review and approve of our housing element prior to it being legally adoptable, we're not asking the board at this point to adopt the housing element. What we're hoping is for the board's consent and direction for us to submit it to the state of California for review, after which point it would come back to the board for further consideration and ultimately for a decision on adoption. Typically, it takes several months for the state to review, and that depends on whether or not they decide to make us make changes to the housing element, how extensive those are, and frankly, just their workload at the state level and how fast they can move on it. So ideally, were you to direct us to submit it to the State Department of Housing and Community Development today, it would likely come back sometime in April for your consideration. I believe that, and then re-review and adoption, well, March or April, ideally, but I would say April is probably a more realistic assessment. That essentially sums up the content of the updates and concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Just have a couple of quick questions, President Groom. One of the policies, the addition of a policy regarding pre-approved development prototypes for small or substandard lots, and I recall, probably it was a couple of years ago, when Supervisor Groom and I had to do, it was a particular project, it was a twenty-five-foot frontage lot, and they wanted to do a two-story house, and we had asked at the time, we actually didn't get approved, we wanted them to be, you know, I think, a single story, because our thoughts, or at least my thought, and I don't want to speak for both of us, but I think we were both saying the same thing, is that a tall skinny lot looks out of place. Did we develop prototypes for these smaller lots?
No, we have not developed prototypes. The intent of this program would be to explore those prototypes and determine exactly that for the type of substandard lot, what is actually the appropriate type of development. It would streamline the process if they were coming forward with something that fits and used the templates that we developed. In other cases, they would still have to go through whatever processes were required, but typically on a lot such as that, the prototype would probably be a single story and fairly small-scale development.
Thanks. And I know we're talking about the commitment to explore policies to incentivize so-called tiny houses. They are kind of interesting, but of course, you know, in my mind, I was looking at some things that are built on the back of a trailer, essentially, and, you know, you can do all the electrical sewer hookups and put them on a property. The problem is you have to have land to do that in. Have you ever thought about, also thought about, or have we thought also about, smaller apartment units? I know in San Francisco, they've talked about, you know, these really tiny units, about two hundred or three hundred square feet, which is kind of small, but, you know, that's also possible. I'm not saying that we have to make them that small, but have we thought about the potential of allowing for multifamily units to be smaller? One of the things I was thinking about is like mid-pen housing. They really cannot do like for a single-story, you know, housing for moderate even low-income folks. They really have to have multifamily units that are four stories high.
To pencil out, it has to be substantially denser. That's correct. We actually, to be frank, we hadn't thought about efficiency apartments in the way that San Francisco has been doing that, and I don't know if our regulations prohibit it, but we certainly don't incur, we don't incentivize it, and we could add a policy to look at that. I think it's something that's certainly worthy of study.
I don't know if developers are interested in that, but I would like to see if, have a policy to permit that. concludes my comments.
Supervisor Pine, do you have comments?
I had a couple of questions. So on our RENA allocation, so that dropped quite a bit from the prior period. Could you just talk a little bit about that? I guess I'm surprised it's gone down by that amount.
Yes, and I believe Supervisor Horstley was actually involved in the technical advisory committee that helped to negotiate those numbers between the jurisdictions. To be frank, the original allocation that we got from ABAG was about three hundred units in total. It was significantly lower, and we actually took on some share of some of the other jurisdictions' units, because there was a pretty broad feeling that was an unfairly low number for us to be tasked with. But the reason that we believe ABAG is doing that is because they want to incentivize the creation of housing in the corridors, in the dense areas, in the cities, where there's transit, where there's infrastructure. Most of the county, obviously, is a rural area, and I think it's actually a policy decision on ABAG's point. It's not necessarily that they think we need less housing, but they don't necessarily want to see it in many of the county areas. They want to see it in the transit corridors, in the infill areas, and therefore, they initially gave significantly more units to the cities and much less to us, and then we negotiated some of that, and we took on more units, but that's the reason. Their calculations at ABAG's level are a little bit non-transparent to us, but we believe that's, it's actually a policy direction that they're pursuing.
And do you know off the top of your head what our actual housing production was in unincorporated San Mateo between two-seven and fourteen? I mean, I guess we provided the zoning to allow the nine thirteen, but do you know how many were actually built in that timeframe?
I do, but not off the top. I mean, I have those numbers, not off the top of my head, but I mean, it was so much, we don't come anywhere. The answer in general is...
Under a hundred?
Yes. I would say under a hundred, yeah. Well, we had one year in that period when Bridge Housing built a very large project in unincorporated Colma, which was a hundred and some units. That's one bump, but beyond that, it's, you know, less than, I would say, in the tens of units a year for most of that period, and most of that period was the recession and housing starts were very, very low as well. So it was a low period for us overall, and they're speeding back up, but we're still not getting much multifamily production, which is where you really get the numbers of units. We get mostly single-family production.
Okay, and then my last question was, you note in the summary that you included an energy conservation section in the report. Could you just talk a little bit about what that entails?
Well, we're required to include an energy conservation section, actually, by state law, and what it basically, in our case, it summarizes what we have existing policies, what existing policies we have around energy conservation as it relates to housing and residential production. So that's the entirety of that section.
What kind of policies do we have there?
Well, we have, we had the green building program, which has been supplanted by the state's revised building code, which has those energy efficiencies.
Yeah, it's the building code primarily, right?
Primarily the building code. That's correct.
Thank you.
Supervisor Cecilia?
Just a quick question. Do you ever coordinate with the Department of Housing on their funding policies and guidelines?
Not generally on the funding policies, no. We summarize and we work with them to understand what those policies are, and maybe the housing element informs their thinking, but we don't directly work with them.
I guess I'm a little bit concerned, because in here you talk about funding policy-based strategies, and you're talking about maintain affordable units. We talk about affordable, and then our funding policies and guidelines don't give us the broadest brush to include affordable housing along with, you know, market rate housing. It actually segregates them rather than includes them, and I'm just sort of curious, at some point, you know, it's sort of a contradiction to me, if someone's willing to do affordable and they would mix it with market rate, why would you tell them they have to do standalone and not allow it to be mixed? Therefore, you get no funding, additional funding.
Yeah, that's, I think that would be more of a question for the housing department, certainly. I do think that some types of projects just don't work without the kind of subsidy when it's standalone affordable. Sometimes the mixed income projects don't pencil out. Maybe the subsidy from the affordable side is not enough to make up for the lower rents or prices, but I'm not absolutely sure why the policies are crafted in that way.
I wonder when it comes back to us, if maybe, I mean, I'm going to talk to the Department of Housing, because I've had some nonprofits talk to me and say, you know, it's making it very difficult for them to be part of some of these projects, and this happens to be a particular Samtrans project, and, you know, if we're going to have some of these funding policy-based strategies, I think at some point we have to work with Department of Housing to make sure some of that's in here and make sure it really works across a broad spectrum rather than limiting ourselves. And so I am going to be working on this, but I just think maybe when it comes back to us, that we can maybe see how that can be incorporated in some way, shape, or form.
We can work on that. I would say, I think that's a discussion that we should have. I also, in the defense of the housing department, actually, I do think a lot of those are pass-through monies from the federal government and the state government, and the requirements on how you use them are set at a different level. And so there may be some of that going on, but I'm not absolutely sure.
I'm not sure that's true, because it wasn't that way two years ago. It's that way. So I'm just, I just want to see some level of coordination there, because I think sometimes we tend to work in silos, and I don't think it's the most productive that we can do.
Plus, some of that money is our money, too, so we do have great discretion.
Mr. Gibson, thank you. Stand by, if you won't mind. We have one public comment from Mr. Hug.
Do you want to open the public hearing, President Groom?
Thank you, President Groom and members of the board. I, Josh Hug, Housing Leadership Council. I first want to commend staff on doing a great job with outreach and incorporating a broad variety of plans. We think this is a great first step moving forward. Production and preservation are really the themes that need to be considered in this housing element, and I think we have, I think this housing element shows that the planning department has done a great job on the production side, you know, looking for innovative approaches, and we're always in search of new ways to do this, particularly in the realm of Planned Bay Area and the development of their downtowns, these priority development areas. Preservation, when we talk about preservation, we're not talking strictly about deed-restricted affordable housing, we're also talking about naturally affordable housing, and that is becoming an increasingly rare thing in this county. I think you've had enough meetings prior to this to understand the scope and the magnitude of this issue. Supervisor Slocum and I had the pleasure of seeing Reverend Jesse Jackson down at Stanford last night, talking about the pressures under which East Palo Alto is experiencing in the heart of Silicon Valley, and they have probably the most robust tenant protections in the Bay Area, possibly the state, and they are still having difficulty. So imagine the rest of the county that has none of those protections. So given the change in the landscape with things like Planned Bay Area, it's not enough to just analyze the potential impacts or the ongoing impacts of these new pressures, of these continuing pressures, but we need to also have some hard discussions about how to preserve the communities that we, you know, have established here and will remain here even as technologies come and go. The tsunamis that come with each wave of technology are in large part transient, the communities are not, and we need ways to maintain that stability. You showed that leadership in two thousand and three with the mobile home parks on the coast side. We think similar discussions have to be had here in this new, you know, new environment where so much money is being poured into such discreet places.
Thank you, Mr. Hug. Appreciate your comments, and thank you for coming this morning.
Should we close the public hearing, President?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I'll move to certify the negative declaration as complete and correct, and direct the staff to submit this to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for certification.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'm sorry to jump in here. I assume you're approving all the recommendations identified in the, recommendations one through five of the report as part of that, and then also, also, is it the will of the board to have planning, the planning department start thinking about this efficiency or tiny apartment concept that Supervisor Horstley set forth and suggested? Is that the will of the full board?
Yes.
Yes, so my motion would include the recommendations.
Okay.
I did include.
And I think also Supervisor Cecilia, you wanted to have a little more closer coordination with the Department of Housing?
Correct. And that's just sort of an aside, not part of the...
So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Byers. Now we will go to item number seven, which is a report from the Sustainability Director, Mr. Egomire.
Good morning, Madam President, board members, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers. The theme for my director's report to you this morning is yesterday, today, and tomorrow. So back in April two thousand and fourteen, Mr. Malpe and Ms. Jensen proposed the idea of creating a pilot program for one year in the county manager's office to open an office of sustainability. This is to oversee and coordinate the stormwater work required by our county and centralized county sustainability initiatives. With your approval, we opened our doors just across the hall from here on July first. Initially, we had three members, Stephen Solte, Lori Pastorelli, and myself, but soon after, we hired three additional people and we became a staff of six. We hired Gordon Tong, Andrea Chow, and Kirsten Pringle, and I'd like to introduce them all. They're all back here in the far back row, joining us today. So with that came basically four main core functions of our office, and they were around stormwater management, sustainability projects, commute alternatives program, and assisting other departments with SEQA. So first, our stormwater efforts focused around three main areas, and these are our master regional permit, our MRP, our municipal, I'm sorry, in which we're working with four departments. That includes the Public Works Department, Planning and Building, Parks, and Environmental Health, and this is all in the effort relative to the actions and the reporting that we need to do about minimizing stormwater impacts in our watersheds and our waterways in our We're also working with the Parks Department and Public Works in regards to Fitzgerald Marine Reserve, referred to as kind of the ASBS, Area of Special Biological Significance. Also there to reduce the stormwater impacts into that sensitive area. And in addition, we're also working with Pacifica in that watershed, because of the unincorporated holdings there that we have, and Pacifica to reduce the total maximum daily loads, TMDLs, in that particular drainage system. We're also working on a number of sustainability projects. First, the Energy Upgrade California, also referred to as Bayren, the Regional Energy Network, and with this, this is an effort to improve our energy efficiencies in single-family, multifamily dwellings, and working with our local building officials on codes and standards. And at this time, I'd like to acknowledge that Stephen in our office has recently been elected the chair of the single-family effort among his peers in the nine Bay Area counties. Quite an accomplishment. Second, we are working on our climate action plan implementation, and this is here both within our... Plan implementation. And this is here both within our Government Operations Plan and as well the County Planning and Building Department's Energy Efficiency Climate Action Plan. Additional sustainability projects include the MTC Connect Redwood City. So, we're working with the Connect Redwood City Bike Share Program. We're also working on illegal dumping in the county, specifically in the North Fair Oaks area, and soon to be released, our C Click Fixed App for our smartphones to report problems to our county officials. Another area that we have responsibility is our Commute Alternatives Program here for our county employees. Currently, we have close to 1,500 county employees commuting to work in other ways than single occupancy vehicles. And last, we're providing SEQA assistance to other departments. So, today, we're an office of seven. Joining us also is Ellen Barton. She and Lori are not in this particular recent slide that we had when we took a staff tour of the Shoreway Environmental Center, but I do want to acknowledge Ellen and her efforts. She has been with CKEG. We have a joint-funded position referred to as our Active Transportation Coordinator, responsible for active and healthy transportation to work and to other locations relative to walking and biking. So, also, today, we are also working on new projects, and these include the Community Choice Aggregation and our contractor, the Lean Energy Group. This is for the procurement of alternative energy sourcing for the competitive nature with PG&E for our San Mateo County and the cities. We're also working on sea level rise and climate change adaptation here in the county. Both very involved efforts within our staff in order to support the vision and direction of your board, and specifically Supervisors Pine and Groom. We're also working closely with environmental health as new legislation takes place around groundwater management. In the South Bay, in East Palo Alto, as part of the San Francisco Creek watershed, efforts are underway by the city to extract more groundwater. So, we are working and participating with the city as they move forward with their management plan. We're also working on a new environmental purchasing policy, which would be updating the county's current version, which dates back to the year 2000. And last, we are investigating an effort around battery recycling and purchasing. And what we have is, we're in the process of securing a vendor who we're negotiating with that would be picking up and being able to recycle the batteries that we consume, as well as delivering to the different departments associated with this program. And last, we're working on a new website, which we're developing hopefully to be the source around sustainability in San Mateo County. So, across the top of our webpage, might be a little hard to see, but we have our topic tabs, which have climate change, energy, transportation, water, zero waste, resources, and about us. And so, we're updating this to follow in, in line with the other departments and the formatting that we have within the county system in our websites. And in the future, we're looking to develop new websites for both our Community Choice Aggregation and Sea Level Rise as standalone websites, very similar to what we have for the North Fair Oaks Forward Efforts by Ellie and Ashley. We're also looking into merging our efforts with the Office of Sustainability and Recycle Works. Jim Porter and I have met regarding these thoughts and have met with staff separately, as well as held a workshop at the beginning of December in regards to this, about this concept. So, with that thought, there would be potentially the, the staffing of about 20 people. And with that, we are looking into and proposing that as part of our fiscal year 1517 budget for your consideration this June. So, here's a recent picture of all of us. This was used in a feature article in the Commute Alternatives Program Newsletter. We're also looking forward to increasing our outreach and education around our employees, our residents, schools, and our community stakeholders. We're also in the need to update our office in terms of branding. And we think as we combine our efforts with Recycle Works, we'll be able to come up with something for our 2015. And we also want to become the go-to resource for everything sustainability. Other areas of interest within our office include groundwater sustainability planning, water conservation, management, and reuse, reducing our trash loads in our stormwater systems, urban tree planting and protection, along with reducing food packaging, and improving our healthy well-being through active transportation. I'd also like to share with you some additional items in our Commute Alternatives Program that Lori's working on. And that is, we're working with the county stakeholders right now to implement a federal commuter pre-tax program at the county. This program would benefit county employees whose transit fare exceeds the $75 subsidy you provide, the, that the county currently offers. And so, then this would be able to come off of their salary with the pre-tax dollars. And we're also, I'd like to acknowledge her efforts relative to the Commute Alternatives Program in which there's going to be a commuter information fair in Room 101 here in early Feb- or in late February. So, with that, I want to thank you for your time today, and it's a pleasure working in this office on your behalf and the residents and businesses of San Mateo County. I'm available if you have any questions.
Jim, I have just a quick question. When you're talking about the commute alternatives, and then we just earlier today talked about a bicycle committee, you know, under parking rec. How do you coordinate what you're doing with what, or how can you in the future, look at what you're doing now for commute alternatives, and then tie it in with bike, pedestrian, et cetera? And, and the reason I'm saying that is, you know, there's always opportunities for grants and things. So-
Right.
You know, again, here's an area where I sort of see a couple of different silos instead of, you know, doing things sort of collaboratively and to get the best bang for our buck.
And I think that's why we're looking at merging with Recycle Works. But I really would like to acknowledge Peggy Jensen, and what she has is a community roundtable every month with all of the different departments that she's in charge of. And it's an opportunity to share our, the efforts that we're working on. And this would be a perfect opportunity to, to share and understand what other departments are doing and where we can combine our efforts and minimize overlap.
Well, I'm also thinking, we were talking about keeping this bicycle under parking rec for a couple of months-
Right.
But then, when it comes back and resurrects itself, it might be a great opportunity to maybe have it under that office or as, as part of one of the-
Exactly.
Tentacles, if you will.
Ellen Barton also works with CKEG in regards to the county-wide effort on their bike committee that Supervisor Horsey mentioned earlier this morning.
Thank you.
Madam President, I want to congratulate and thank Jim for his leadership in this startup effort. The organizational skills and the, and the enthusiasm he brought to this and, and the energy and enthusiasm his staff has brought to this effort are, are really commendable. In fact, whenever I, I talk to them or see what they're doing, I just get tired of thinking about the things that they've really undertaken in the last 10 or 11 months or so. So, my recommendation of the budget this year will be to make this permanent. I think this is an outstanding example of the county leading in an area that we need to lead in. So, much of what we do in this county understandably is focused on today and, and particularly the lives of our existing residents. But this board has always looked forward and, and thought about the future and the impact that, that our actions today will, will have on the future residents of this county. And there's no effort that I can think of that would be more important to that than the efforts that are led in this office. In fact, during the budget process this year, we will be examining other county functions besides the recycling works to see if there are other good fits with this office and make those recommendations as well in, in the budget. And then, in my separate discussions, a number of city managers have approached me about the potential for partnerships with the Office of Sustainability. And, and so, part of our efforts next year will not be just outreach, but partnering with cities in, in the work that we're doing. So, I think a great first year, a great effort. You should feel very proud of, of this, and I certainly congratulate Jim and his fine staff.
Thank you, Mr. Maltby.
Here, here. Supervisor Pine?
I just add a couple of comments. I've, too, I'm incredibly excited about the, you know, startup accomplishments of the Office of Sustainability and, you know, strongly support the init- the direction that County Manager Maltby just articulated. You know, the importance of initiative definitely can't be understated. You know, our, our, the necessity of dealing with climate adaptation is, is upon us, and that, that demand will, will increase with each passing year. I think water in particular is going to become probably front and center, and, and issues of water conservation and recycled water are going to become, become paramount. So, by having this office and, and having a coordinated place in the county, we can really add, we can add a lot of value. You know, with, with 20 individual cities, some of these issues are pretty difficult to grapple with city by city. And, and also, you know, in my experience working on these issues, it's, it's, I've, you know, already seen a lot of progress in, in the fact that we're trying to, you know, bring a lot of different people who touch on these things into a, into one location. So, the proposal to bring in some of the recycle work people makes great sense, and we'll, we'll give the effort even more momentum.
Thank you, Mr. Egomire.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, we'll go to item number eight, which is from the County Manager's Office of Workforce and Economic Development. Ms. Pollak?
Good morning, President Groom, members of the board, Mr. Maltby, and Mr. Byers. Thank you very much for having me here today. My name is Nicole Pollak, and I am the Director of the County of San Mateo Workforce Investment Board. So, we have been investigating, really building a sustainable workforce development system, and that's what brings me here today. What I'd like to do first is just quickly review a convergence of events or our background that brings us forward. So, in September of 2013, the Workforce Investment Board shifted from the Human Services Agency to a division under the County Manager's Office. And this placed the Workforce Investment Board, or the WIB, in a position to effectively serve all of our required customer base. And that includes our adult job seekers, dislocated workers, youth, and our primary customer, according to the Workforce Investment Act, is business. So, it effectively put us in a place where we could serve all of our customers. At the same time, the shift ultimately reduced the ability, the ability to share infrastructure and administrative costs, primarily because we were a standalone division instead of embedded within a larger agency structure. At the same time, we received a 10% reduction in allocation that was realized, and this trend will continue as our allocations from the federal government are based on unemployment rate. Our current unemployment rate, according to the Employment Development Department, just hit 3.8%, which per federal economic standards is full employment within the county. Thirdly, compliance requires separation between the WIB, the Workforce Investment Board, the WIB, and direct one-stop operations. Some of you may know that we were directly operating Peninsula Works, our one-stop location in the daily set, in the Daily City Office. We were able to procure one-stop services. We went out to bid and have new partners onboard, which hence have expanded services to all of our required customer bases, including business, and we've added services in additional communities. We obtained compliance, which is fabulous, but this further exacerbated the ability to shift both program and administrative costs. And then, finally, our legislation was reauthorized. So, Workforce Investment Act, or WEA, became WEOA, Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. And that new legislation, WEOA, requires service delivery based on regional labor market. So, our, as you can see from just the background, we have an annual structural deficit of over $431,000. So, the WIB appointed an ad hoc committee, and we had a really good representation from different sectors, to investigate what should the appropriate structure of the WIB be, given the background that I just mentioned. And the framework for analysis, they looked at WIB feedback, but all of these are integrated because we couldn't talk about WIB feedback with talking about customer service and industry sectors. We couldn't talk about customer service and industry, industry sectors without talking about community partnerships. So, all of these elements were embedded in every discussion. The scope of the review that the Workforce Investment Board took on is as follows. So, four different governance models were investigated, and it was determined that the consortium approach was the most sustainable model, primarily because it reduces administrative burdens and costs, maximizes limited resources, allows for leveraging of resources, utilizes economies of scale, maintains level of program expertise, and follows the intent of WEOA or the new legislation. Both WIBs independently conducted SWOT analyses, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and determined collectively, but individually, that collaboration of best practices to serve customers was something that both WIBs felt were in common if we decided to go forward and join a consortium approach. Access and stability of funding was also identified. Capturing regional energy and a shared regional labor market, which we have, were strengths of combining forces. In addition, it does follow the intent of, excuse me, WEOA or our new legislation. As far as resources are concerned, combining or joining a consortium approach combines base allocations and helps to stabilize a basic level of funding. It increases the availability of administrative dollars due to consolidation of functions, administrative functions, and increases grant funding opportunities. Both WIBs identified industry sectors or labor market information, such as technology, health, manufacturing, and construction, are priority growth sectors, and San Mateo County also designates finance and insurance. We looked at community partnerships, and we're already combined in terms of community colleges, adult schools, grant funding, economic development. We did choose our dance partner to be Nova, which I'll talk about in a moment, and they currently are, manage both our one-stop and our youth providers. As far as service delivery models are concerned, Nova uses a service design model that offers faster client services at the first step of client entry into the cer- into the system. And this is a more efficient transition to WEOA as the Nova model is already similar to WEOA design. And finally, a Nova is really the consortium that operates under a joint power agreement. The city of Sunnyvale is designated as the Joint Powers Agency, and the county then would request to join the consortium. So, in summation, the Workforce Investment Board brings forth to you today the recommendation to combine local workforce areas with the Nova consortium. Ultimately, it strengthens services for customers, strengthens regionalism, which also complies with the intent of WEOA. It increases and maximizes resources and has a viable design, and we are looking at sustainability of our workforce development system. So, up for your consideration today is number one, to join the Nova consortium and sign the joint powers agreement. And number two, and this is quite a mouthful and full of a, a lot of technical semantics, but to sign the documents that notify Nova, the California Workforce Investment Board, State Employment Development Department, the governor, of the desire to join the Nova consortium, which thereby redefines local workforce investment areas and creates a newly- which thereby redefines local workforce investment areas and creates a newly formed local workforce investment area.
Questions?
I just have one question. This is actually the city of Sunnyvale. Is the, there's kind of the governing board?
The way that it's designed is that the Nova consortium operates under a joint powers agreement, that the city of Sunnyvale is designated as the Joint Powers Agency, and so that the county would be requesting to join the consortium, not necessarily the agency, but yes, city of Sunnyvale.
I guess I didn't realize that a city would have that kind of responsibility. I thought it would have been like the county of Santa Clara, but could you explain how that works?
Sure. It's, and I may ask my counterpart here from Nova today, which is Mr. Steve Quick, to assist me on this, because he definitely knows his jurisdiction. So it is a, there are a couple of different Workforce Investment Boards within Santa Clara County. The first is Work to Future Foundation, and that is the city of San Jose, and they combine their economic development along with their workforce investment funds to create this Work to Future Foundation. But that's primarily a city of San Jose. So Nova is a seven-city consortium made of the Northern Valley cities, Cupertino, Milpitas, and Fort.
So they are all in the consortium?
They're all in the consortium, so we would join the Nova consortium.
Just to add to that, Madam President, members of the board, for whatever reason, the history in Santa Clara County was that the cities really took the lead in workforce development and not the county. And so Nova is a very longstanding functioning agency, as is the city of San Jose's.
Essentially, what they did is they split it up into South, Central, North. Okay?
Supervisor Tissier?
You know, I like the concept. The one thing I want to be sure of, and I see it here in the notes, that, you know, we're going to recommend to the Nova WIB that we create a subcommittee to oversee and monitor the services being provided in our county, and that if, we'd be given some preference if there becomes some vacancies. I guess I'm just a little bit concerned. I've seen things where, you know, Silicon Valley Foundation, which was part of us, everything moves south, and, you know, there's always a concern that we kind of get lost in the shuffle when something moves to the south end. And I don't know how often there'd be a report out, but if we do go this way, which I think, looking at the finances and looking how it could be more robust, would be a great thing to do, but I guess the question I have is, you know, how often will we get reports back on the activity? What I don't want to find is that the north county of San Mateo is sort of in no man's land, which happens oftentimes, and that the services that we do provide continue to happen maybe in a more robust manner, and I just want to be sure that it's actually working for us.
We can certainly provide reports quarterly if that be the desire of the board. And also, I'd point out that the agreement has a termination clause that's relatively easy to exercise should this arrangement not work out for us.
Yeah, I was going to suggest to make the same comment. The, should give the board some measure of comfort that if this does not play out in the way that you would hope and intend, that there is ability to extricate ourselves from the situation.
Perhaps I could add some context to this. Supervisor Slocum and I represent you all on the WIB board, and I've been a WIB board member since Supervisor Rose Jacobs Gibson left. You know, I think you're fairly familiar with our history. We were unhappy with previous executive director when we realized that the training that we thought was going on really wasn't going on, and that we weren't having a very high number of job replacements whatsoever. And then another, we did a recruitment and found someone else to lead the WIB, and he didn't stay long because of some family issues and had to leave. Around that time, Ms. Pollak joined the county, and she had extensive WIB experience. The WIB formed a subcommittee to go out and investigate all of this, met with Nova. As you might all recall, one of our interim directors was an executive with Nova, and he came in and managed our WIB program for a few months, and I think convinced many members of the WIB that a merger was important, and Nova was probably the right person to do that, or the right organization to do that. And so then Ms. Pollak joined us and did a lot of research also. Warren and I share the same concerns about not having dedicated board members, and we also share the same concern that we won't be as close to it as possible. But I received a letter from Mr. Cork just the other day telling us that there would be opportunities to apply for the board. We have two WIB members who want to be on the board. One of them is Roseanne Faust from Sam Seda, and been active in our WIB for some time. So we're gonna, Supervisor Slocum and I are really going to stay on top of this, and if we see any red alerts or anything, we will let everyone know quickly.
Do you mind if I ask a question? Just following up on Supervisor Tissier's comments, once this subcommittee is formed that you said was going to monitor performance, that's the vehicle through which we'll know if this new arrangement is really moving the needle in the way we want it moved.
Well, the subcommittee was formed to really investigate the options as far as building the sustainable workforce development program. However, we do have, under WEOA and WEA both, we do have quarterly performance that we're required to present to the state as well as the federal government, and so that's public knowledge, but I'm sure that we can definitely work toward a report to ensure that that's included for you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pine?
You know, I think this is definitely a good direction to go. I've heard lots of good things about Nova, in particular their kind of expertise and understanding the kind of the, you know, the core job market in technology and biotech, and having some success record in training people, you know, for that, you know, some better paying jobs in those sectors. I'm glad everyone has brought these, brought this focus on the governance, and if I, maybe I could just drill down on that a little bit more. I mean, how many board members are there for, for the, I guess it's the Nova WIB right now?
Right. I believe right now, and please correct me if I'm wrong, thirty-three? There's thirty-three members currently, thank you very much. And that changes under WEOA, so.
It changes, what does that mean?
It changes underneath the new legislation, the required number of board members.
Probably goes down?
It, it looks like it will go down, yes. It changes the requirements of the seats. So most likely, it will go down.
And who appoints those, you know, thirty-three members today?
The same as San Mateo County. There is a board development committee from the WIB that takes a look at the applications, takes a look at the required membership seats, and then makes the recommendation and brings it forward to the city of Sunnyvale for approval. Yes.
So the city of Sunnyvale, their council ultimately votes on who joins the board? Okay, yeah, I mean, certainly with, you know, let's assume there's 25 members, you know, given our, the number of people in our county and the geographic scope of our county, yeah, I would think in time here, we'd want some pretty robust representation on the board, and not sure, I guess we're going on good faith at this point, because I guess that's all, I guess all we can do, which we'll see how that goes.
And Nova, if I just might add, does currently have three San Mateo County representatives on their board, and so that's a good start. And as applications come in and seats change underneath the new legislation, then, you know, they'll, they'll work to ensure equal representation over time.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve that County San Mateo's Workforce Investment Board recommendation to redefine local workforce investment area boundaries and create a new local workforce area by joining the Nova.
Second.
Any other, I'm public speaker, excuse me, sorry. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, President Groom. I'm a former past president of Peninsula Professional Network, and this is a good idea a long time coming, and I fully endorse it. Please adopt the board's recommendation and authorize San Mateo County's Workforce Investment Board to join the Nova Consortium. There are several reasons for following the recommendation, and having the Workforce Investment Board join the Nova Consortium that include dealing with a poorly structured workforce investment act that I believe we've struggled with for years. I see this as a significant response to that. Many of San Mateo County's unemployed and underemployed regularly travel to Sunnyvale already to use Nova's resources to identify employment opportunities, and following the recommendation will just recognize the reality on the ground. So please vote in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
President Groom, I also need to modify my motion to also authorize the president of the board to sign documents to inform the governor of the state of California, the California Workforce Investment Board, the Employment Development Department, and Nova of the intent to redefine the local workforce investment area boundaries by joining the Nova consortium.
Thank you. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, and we will, Warren and I will keep you informed. So now, Mr. County Manager, anything else?
Madam President, members of the board, I just wanted to bring you up to date in my report today on Measure A. As I reported at the last meeting, we have received over 300 letters of intent for the next two years totaling a mere $283 million worth of requests. 171 million of that are for new initiatives, and 112 million for county infrastructure or expansion of some existing initiatives that were funded during the first two years. After preliminary review of the Measure A submissions, I will be recommending focusing the majority of the new Measure A funding for the next cycle in the following priority areas where I think we could really achieve some substantial impact with the funds that are available. One would be ending homelessness and increasing the availability of affordable housing for county clients. Two would be supporting foster youth from the entry into their systems through emancipation and into self-sufficiency in their lives after foster care. Three, protecting older adults and ensuring that low-income residents can age in place. Four, environmental sustainability and climate resilience. And five, targeted interventions in communities where lower high school graduation and higher truancy rates and other acute needs exist. So the next steps then in this process would be that responses to the letters of intent will be issued this Friday. Applicants will be invited to submit a full application or refer to an RFP process or notify that their proposal has not been selected to continue on at this point. A summary of all those recommendations will be provided to your board prior to the issuance of these responses. Existing Measure A initiatives and new infrastructure needs, that is the continuation of Measure A previously funded initiatives and new county capital and IT proposals, are undergoing a parallel review and will be presented to your board with recommendations on March 17th. New proposals in this process, once the ongoing Measure A needs are established, that will allow us to know what the pot of money is actually available beyond that. We will be bringing a package of the new Measure A proposals recommended for funding to the board on March 31st, or, and/or, there are a number of areas of proposals where we received a number of proposals that are very similar, and really, we think it's the appropriate thing to do an RFP process. So we will also be recommending those areas and the RFP process for that, at that time. So on March 31st, some of the proposals were really standalone, and we think they're worthwhile, and we'll be recommending those to the board on the 31st. Those that really represent a cluster, if you will, will be recommending that we move forward with an RFP on those proposals. The RFPs will be issued in April. Contract negotiations for the approved proposals will commence. And finally, the approved proposals and funds for RFP service area will be incorporated along with the other recommendations previously approved by the board in your budget hearings, and will be, if approved by the board, ready to go on July 1st. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Maltby. Will, of the 300 submissions, as I understand the process, the staff and department heads went through those, and we're going to end up with a somewhat smaller list. Will we, at any point in time, have a hand or be able to discuss those things that might have been eliminated by departments and staff that may be near and dear?
Right. There'll be two opportunities. Once on the 17th, which would, of course, concentrate on county programs and infrastructure needs, and once on the 31st for everything outside.
Thank you.
But, Mr. Maltby, you said the letters were going out Friday.
The letters are going out Friday simply saying to those that aren't invited to submit an RFP or continue on, notifying them of that fact, those that are, of course, being notified that the process is moving forward. And so those that are notified that they're not going forward will be told that on the 31st, they have an opportunity to come before the board and to make a pitch.
Yeah, I guess that was sort of where I was going, is at what point do we get a chance to look at things? Because some of the things, you know, one of the main things we talked about with Measure A were the gaps in services, and I don't know, when you talk about those areas, those are very important areas, but I also wonder, are there some gaps in services around health? Are there some gaps in services in public safety? I didn't hear a lot of the usual suspects, so to speak, and I just want to make sure we're not, those, what you were talking about are newer programs versus existing programs? Okay. And are we going to see anything from some of the other departments on newer programs as well, or?
I believe in what we're calling the expansion of existing programs or new programs. We will, you will be seeing those on the 17th.
Okay, okay. And is that, is that an actual board day, the 17th?
I believe it is, yeah.
Can we possibly get the materials a lot earlier than Thursday before? I know we have been given some binders.
There's going to be a lot, and both for the 17th and the 31st. We'll make sure that not only do you have those well in advance, but also that we provide really in-depth summaries so that you can follow the process from the submission of the letters to intent to where the recommendations are.
Yeah, the reason I say I think from the time you send out letters to people saying they're kind of not in the mix, I can see the phones ringing and we'll have people lined up at our doors. It'd be also helpful, maybe, I don't know, is to kind of, for those that you're sending letters saying, we don't think this fits in sort of our priority areas for this year or the next two years, I wonder before you send the letters on Friday, could you indicate to us sort of where those areas are? So we? Before, okay, just, I think it'd be helpful so that we know what's, what we're going to hear, who and what we're going to hear about.
I guess this is probably makes me a little bit nervous is that the, this screening through these five criteria, you know, if you kind of read them literally, you're going to wipe out a lot of, a lot of things that have been proposed. Like, for example, you know, there were seven or eight proposals about dental care, which I wouldn't think fit, you know, fit into these priorities. And, you know, it seems to me, you know, that these priorities are going to just have a huge impact on what, you know, what we look at, and I just feel like, probably, I think it'd be helpful for the, for the board to talk about, I mean, are these really the five very top priorities that we have? I mean, what are the other five that could have been on there that we're deciding not? I mean, I don't know, this is a difficult process, because there's always, anytime you eliminate something, it's trying. But, you know, it's, it's kind of a one, it's kind of a cut at what our five goals should be. This is probably the most important decision right here, these five goals, so.
Can I ask another question? I'm trying to, I'm thinking back. We had a session on setting our priorities, and from that session, it escapes me what exactly those were, but how does our priorities that we set at that meeting line up with the, these five areas?
I think they're consistent. They're consistent, and many of your priorities were really directed toward county programs, which we're really not talking about too much today, but I think you'll see that more completely but I think you'll see that more completely on the seventeenth.
One of the concerns that I had is that there are many county programs submitted by county in our binders in addition to those of non-county. And for me, the priorities were really at-risk and early intervention. And, and as I've read the applications, some of these don't really jive with that.
And the one other thing I neglected to mention is, and we'll more fully identify this on the seventeenth, as we get closer to the budget, there may be some things that we think may not quite be appropriate for Measure A but look like they may be appropriate to recommend for funding as part of the regular budget process. We'll try to identify those things, too, so that there are really kind of two paths going forward. Measure A, which we've been talking about and concentrating, but of course, as we get closer to the budget, there are those programs that we may think are worthy of the Board's consideration as part of the permanent budget process.
Anything else?
I guess, again, again, I just wonder whether, are we going too fast here? I mean, should we, should, I mean, the last time when we had the Board discussion, it was on a really chaotic day. We had protests, we had a couple other big things. We really didn't talk that much, you know? We didn't have a study session, we didn't really, various members kind of said, "These are things I'm interested in." We made no attempts as a Board to say, "What are our biggest priorities?" I mean, well, we, statements were made, but there was, it wasn't a real discussion. I wonder if we should have that, you know, it would, of course, make us lose two weeks if we did that, but.
I agree with that, Madam President, and also just ask the question that Supervisor Pine just mentioned, does pushing it back two weeks to allow for that conversation conflict with a timeline on budgets or other?
It really only conflicts with the timeline that the Board has previously adopted that we were hearing to. I think if you slip two weeks to further discuss your priorities, even if that means that the final action that the Board takes would be on the fourteenth of April, we still have sufficient time to include it within the, in the budget. So, I don't think there's any irreparable harm. We built some slack into the schedule purposely. This is kind of a new process and we wanted to make sure that, that the Board was perfectly comfortable as we went through. So I think re-agendinate this for a work session, if you want, on the tenth would be fine and we could talk about priorities in more detail and then proceed on from there. Presumably, that, that would mean that you would like us to hold off sending out letters until after the tenth.
Yes, I think so.
I think it'd be helpful, though, to have from you what your recommendation was going to be so we could understand it more clearly because we don't have anything to show, so we're not sure that it's any different than we would do either until we check it out.
And if I might add one more comment, I, you know, I've spoken a couple of times about, you know, my belief that, you know, I like the idea of some of the concentration, you know, as opposed to doing a hundred different things. But, you know, maybe when we come back on the tenth, you know, maybe it would be good to, you know, for staff to take that list and, and just, and put them kind of in more buckets. And so, so maybe there's ten buckets and we can really decide if, you know, like, I don't think we should fund all ten buckets, probably. I mean, we could discuss that, you could do a little bit in each of ten. I kind of like the idea of having four or five we focus on. There's always going to be some edge cases that special needs. But, you know, we don't want to do too much of that or else we'll turn into just no, no focus. But, you know, when, when we look at this, you know, what are these, kind of the other groupings? Like, for example, like the dental one, there's, I don't know, I don't know if that's worthy of standing alone, but I was struck there, like, eight of those, you know? So, probably the Board should discuss whether that kind of makes the cut, you know? Does that really become a priority? I mean, so maybe one of the other groupings that, you know, that we, that we think should kind of make it to the, to the bigger list, you know? If we did dental, we wouldn't do all nine of them, whatever they have. But I don't know if the Board wants to do any, maybe, I don't, you know, we'd have to talk about, we wouldn't do any dental, you know?
I, I think we could do that. We certainly started that process with respect to the five areas that I've identified. I don't think it would be too much of a stretch to add some other natural groupings. Now, as you said, Supervisor Pine, there are some that are just, they're outliers. They really don't fall into anything logical, frankly.
Yeah, the point I was also trying to make is, we have, say we have five groupings, and this is, and they stay, is here. There's probably going to be some other projects that Board members have spoken to that don't fit that we're still probably going to fund. Now, again, I would prefer not to have twenty of those, but there'll probably be some, you know?
Madam President, to the President, I wonder if, also from our previous meeting, even though we didn't get to have as big a work session, we did outline some priorities. I wonder if that could be recapped for us as well, so we can sort of mesh all those packages together?
Sure, we could do that, too.
Okay. Everybody satisfied for the moment? Okay. Anything else, John?
No.
So now we will go to item number nine, which is a resolution authorizing a transfer request in the amount of $150,000 for Pescadero Creek. Supervisor Horsley?
Thank you, President Grum. I actually am really anxious to talk about this, almost jumped the gun, in fact. I apologize for that. In any case, the, this has to do with Pescadero flooding, and, you know, we've talked about this before. I've been aware of this for a long time, in fact, when I was Sheriff. And, you know, we did have some specific major flooding in that area, but I was not, never quite aware of how bad it was, that I thought it was only something that occurred during major storms. But in fact, it occurs even on minor storms. It floods constantly and consistently. And so, since I took office, it was really one of my top priorities. The first time I ever actually applied for a grant was actually July of 2011, really shortly after I took office. And then the first time I made a report to the Board was actually in May of 2012. And the Board later provided some additional funding in December of 2012 as well. You know, the complexity of this problem is, is really fascinating. It's really, it has highly corrosive soils, actually, they're geomorphically soils. They're highly corrosive soils. And as a consequence, what's happened is the channel, both in the upstream and downstream, and even the lagoon has become clogged. And historically, the reason for that is because of logging, agriculture, and other human impacts on the lagoon as well as the creek. The other complexity, adds complexity, really the endangered species, the lagoon and even the creek, its current habitat, the red-legged frogs, San Francisco garter snakes. The lagoon itself has tidewater gobies, steelhead, and it's really, according to federal agencies, prime habitat to potentially reintroduce co-host salmon. And, you know, I think I've talked a little bit about some of the water qualities that have caused really significant fish kills. That's, one of the new words that I learned was extirpate. And in essence, what happened, what could happen is that, it doesn't mean that a species is exterminated, I mean, into extinction, but it could be exterminated from that particular lagoon. And we are concerned about both those other steelheads as well, well as tidewater gobies. Other complexities have to do with land ownership. Many, there are private landowners both upstream and downstream. There's post-upstream, there's the state parks downstream, and as I said, private landowners both, both in the upstream areas as well as downstream. And then there are, of course, permitting agencies. There's almost a dozen county, state, and federal agencies. The only agency that really wasn't involved, by the way, in this study was the Army Corps of Engineers, and they were only involved even tangentially. So in any case, after studying this, and we came up with a whole series of public safety things, working with the Sheriff, the Office of Emergency Services, with the Fire Department, we did some things to make, to notify people, signage on the roadway, lighting on the area that floods, because it gets so bad, even, again, when, going back to when I was the Sheriff, one of our patrol cars got stuck there. And we've had other kinds of vehicles, families, people, thinking that they could get through and it couldn't, get stuck right in the middle of that. So it's a significant public safety issue. Give you an example, one of the things that we have to do, the Fire Department has to do, and even perhaps even the ambulance services sometimes, is when there's a flood, when they know that there's going to be a rain, you, the, first of all, the fire station puts up all kinds of sandbags and then they overtop it with a blast, black paper, plastic so that the water won't get into the fire station itself. Then they actually station one truck, or an engine, that is, they don't have trucks. They have engines and they station it inside the town because they know that they won't be able to get an engine through that flooding. And so it's a public safety issue. So to address it, the Board in December of 2012 actually authorized some additional funding to work with the RCD, RCD is here, in fact. The reason we got involved with the RCD is they had a small amount of money from the California State Department of Water Resources as well as U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services. And we actually contributed about a half a million dollars to this, to a study. And the study was done by both the RCD and Seabec, the engineering company. It was a two-year study. We involved the community, we had many community meetings because, as you know, the community is really, they're incensed about how bad this is, is, and their sign is all over the place that says, you know, "If you dredge, it will not flood." And, and we knew we could not dredge without doing a scientific engineering study. So what we did is we studied thirteen different potential options. And the options came from not only the engineers and the scientists, but also from the community. The community would come up with ideas about, "Why can't you do this, that, or some other thing?" And so we actually took all those as an integrated solution. We, well, I should say Seabec and RCD. So we engaged both the permitting agencies, the community, winnowed down those, those potential solutions. And we've come up with the potential solutions essentially. So, Callex Nelson from the RCD, Irene is here with her as well, and they are going to give you an overview and of what took essentially two years of study to come up with a solution, long-term solution for the flooding for this little community. Callex?
Good morning. Nice to see you all. Thank you for having me here this morning to talk about this project. It's one of many partnership projects between the RCD, Resource Conservation District, and the county. And I've been asked to explain a little, give you a little bit of background about what this project was. And this was to develop solutions to the primary flooding in Pescadero. So, a little bit about the problem, background on the problem. So, Pescadero Creek Road is the primary access road for the town of Pescadero from Highway One. And as Supervisor Horsley mentioned, there's frequent flooding of this road even during very minor storm events. This isn't something that's a twenty-year storm event necessarily. And it affects public safety, as Supervisor Horsley described, public infrastructure, private property, and has significant economic impacts to the town. Not only that people can't get into the town to purchase goods or supplies, but also people perceive that if there's a rain, they won't be able to, so they don't even bother to go. So, this really became a problem in the 1980s. And the, the community has wanted a solution for about thirty years. So the, I should also mention that the road, while it's true that the road, this road is the primary access and egress to the community, it's also true that there's a couple of other ways up and around through the hills that they could get out of town that can take hours. And ironically, they are very dangerous, those roads, in the same conditions that would make this road flooded. So the, this really cuts the community off. Just a couple other images showing you the water going across the road and, and on private properties, vehicles trying to get through, and even school buses, so children in school buses trying to get through. And people, I think, pretty consistently make their own risk assessment of whether or not to try to get through that flooding. Note that this is dry, there's no rain, and that's still the water on the road in this photo. So a little bit about what our project was. It was about, as Supervisor Horsley mentioned, it was about a two-year process. And, and I put this together of what the project does and doesn't do, or did or didn't do, not only to manage expectations about what this project is, but also for understanding some of the findings later and some of the recommendations. So this was a project to find long-term solutions to the regular flooding of Pescadero Road. So, it does look at these longer-term or sustainable solutions. It's not emphasizing the short-term solutions or Band-Aid fixes, which also may be important in the, in the near term. It addresses the flooding that occurs regularly after minor storm events, like a two- or ten-year storm event. This is not for the big floods. The community of Pescadero is in a floodplain, and it's going to be affected in large storm events. This is to address the, the regular flooding. This is also addressing the flooding on Pescadero Creek Road that, it's confusing because the name of the road is Pescadero Creek Road, but the creek that is flooding the road is Butino Creek. So it does not address the, this is addressing the flooding on the road, not the flooding of properties, not other roads, and not flooding from other creeks, including Pescadero Creek. So this is addressing the area where there's been a chronic problem for about thirty years. The other thing that is significant about this project is that we are very intentional about integrating environmental improvements into the flooding solutions. This is to not only help with permitting solutions and funding opportunities, but also to make sure that different efforts for restoration in that area are not at cross purposes with solutions to flooding, and also simply because it's the right thing to do. It's the right way to approach the project to be comprehensive and integrated.
Can I ask you just a quick question on those items? Where it says it'll address flooding that occurs after regular minor storm events. When you showed those pictures earlier, was that considered minor or major?
Yes, those were minor storm events.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty bad. When you see that kind of flooding after a pretty minor storm event, that's, that's a significant problem. So, a little bit more about the, the funding for this. Supervisor Horsley mentioned it. The, the project was seeded or begun, kicked off by funding through the Bay Area Integrated Regional Water Management Plan that is administered through the Department of Water Resources through Proposition 84. And that kick-started the project, enabled some analysis and some public process. Then we received some additional funds from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to develop habitat restoration components for a truly integrated solution that would incorporate benefits to the community by reducing flooding with opportunities to recover threatened and endangered species. Then the county came in and actually you became the primary funder and a significant partner in terms of technical assistance that enabled us to complete much more thorough analysis for more meaningful and conclusive results and to have an inclusive public process with diverse stakeholder input, which I'm, I'm confident is the reason that this project was successful. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. So, a little bit about that process. The first was to establish a stakeholder advisory group. This is a long list, but I want to highlight that the list of the advisors to this project includes the regulatory agencies who ultimately would have permitting authority for any solution that's proposed, community members who have ties to the community or recognize the community, can sort of accomplish some of the elements of outreach and getting information that would be harder for us to do. And also, two members from the county that I wanted to highlight for you here because I want to give them some acknowledgements. I want to commend Anne Stillman and Carol Foster, who are in County Department of Public Work staff, really rolled up their sleeves in this project. And they provided very insightful, very thorough feedback from beginning to end. They were not on this committee in name, so if you have, if you see them in the halls, I would suggest that you give them a thank you. And, and they also made sure that they, they were very strong advocates for making sure that the process incorporated what the county's needs and goals were. So, after establishing a stakeholder advisory group, the consultant team, which was selected by that advisory group, did data collection and modeling. These consultants and some others walked about four or five miles of the creek, starting in the marsh, walking upstream, and collected data about the shape and size of the creek to build a computer model of how water and sediment move throughout that system and so that they could then model interventions. What are possible solutions and how would that change the situation? Next part of the process was having public meetings. We had three public meetings, all of which were in Pescadero, all of which were well-attended, between maybe sixty-five and over a hundred people per meeting. The first meeting elicited ideas from absolutely anybody and much to the chagrin, I think of some folks who were there, Irene and I said, "We are going to stay as late as it takes tonight to hear every single idea," and we did. And that was to, there have been many- Don's like, "Yes, it was a long meeting." To hear all of the ideas that were, had been floating around in this community for decades. And, and we said several times throughout the process, "This is your chance. If you all know the answer, this is your chance to tell us what it is." The second meeting presented the simulation of the flooding that was produced by the model and asked the community to verify its accuracy based on their experiences. Is this what you saw happening here in eighty-six? Is this what you saw happening here last year? And, in fact, we did ground truth and find that it was accurate. And in fact, we did ground truth and find that it was accurate. That second meeting also presented the preliminary results of running their ideas through that model, and gave a sense of which ones were worth exploring further and had the potential to, showed the most promise for being solutions to flooding. And the last meeting, which was held this fall, presented the results, the recommendations, and the next steps. And I should note that of all of the years that I've worked in Pescadero, this, this process was by far the most well-received, and I am certain that that is because the funding from the county enabled us to hold a very inclusive, transparent process. And it made all the difference in the world of whether or not people were heard and whether we could come up with good, good solutions. So then the last part of the process was to produce the report and recommendations, which is available on our website. We also have a hard copy, and if anybody would like to see it, there's certainly ways that we could get that to you. And that, and that report is what we're using as the basis to move forward with the recommendations. I'm not going to read through all this, don't worry, but the idea here is to show you that many different solutions, not just in number, but in type, were proposed and analyzed. Often, the, they were aggregated because a number of people maybe had a similar idea, and it wasn't, didn't make sense to evaluate them all separately, but we looked at a lot of different potential solutions to flooding. And then the results, this is going to be maybe a little tough to see on the screen, but the bottom line of what we learned is that this is a problem of too much sediment, not a problem of too much water. And that is significant in terms of what the solutions are. And because of, let me try, let's use there, yeah, I'm gonna, oh, this won't, this is not, I can't point to anything on there, can I? I'm gonna have to be, I'm gonna try and use words to describe what you're looking at here. So you see from the sort of northwest to the southeast, the furthest creek over, that's Pescadero Creek. That was not modeled, and I can't verify the accuracy of that. There's another creek coming from the marsh that's going sinuously more sou- southern. That's Butino Creek. And Butino Creek is, gosh, this is tough. Can I go up and point to that? Can I, is that okay? Okay. I know this is not standard, but I wanted you to be able to see it. So this is, that's Pescadero Marsh. This is Butino Creek. This is Highway One, and this is Pescadero Creek Road coming from Highway One. The photos that you saw were of the flooding that takes place here. This is upstream. Butino Creek flows this way into Pescadero Marsh. And at the road, there's flooding across this field, on these private properties, and across the road. Right here, this triangle is the Cal Fire Station, which becomes, it is a primary source of emergency response for the community. It becomes separated from the community by this flooding at this. And this is merely a two-year storm event. The one on the right is a ten-year storm event. Basically, what that means, a two-year storm event basically means in any given year, there's approximately fifty percent chance that that would happen. So the, the analysis that we did identified where areas flood and different types of storm events, solutions to the flooding that are beneficial, or at least not harmful, to the environment. And those broke into three general categories. Basically, those categories have to do with managing all the sediment that's coming in from upstream, which is primarily private lands. Then what can be done where we see the problem? Where we see the problem is at the road. That's in the county's right-of-way area. Where we see the problem is not the source of the problem, but it still needs a set of actions. And then downstream, in the marsh, on state parks' property, needs a different set of actions. So what we also found, and that I believe Jim Porter is going to go into more detail about this in a moment, is that the only solution that provided short and long-term benefits on its own was a causeway. And this is particularly true in light of climate change and sea level rise. I think that you're going to find this is a community that will be very impacted by that. So what are the next steps? As I mentioned, the, 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 the natural areas of aggregating solutions come into this sort of upstream, at the road, and downstream. Upstream, primarily private lands, needs floodplain restoration and sediment management. Restoring floodplains, what was naturally occurring floodplains historically, that gave water a place to go. It gave sediment a place to drop out. And as the, as the creek has become disconnected from the floodplain, the creek is delivering more sediment and not storing as much sediment. The solutions to that are going to happen on a lot of private properties, and the RCD is pursuing that with a number of private landowners. We are also managing that with some other sediment control programs we have addressing gullies and rural roads, et cetera. At the road, in the county right-of-way, what is being recommended is some maintenance dredging to remove the plug of sediment that has gathered under the bridge at the road, and also exploring the feasibility of a causeway. And Jim Porter, I know, is going to talk with you more about that. Then in the marsh, we are working with state parks on a proposal, a grant proposal, to the state's Fisheries Restoration Grant Program to dredge, to remove where, that is where the biggest plug of sediment has deposited. That's where the, where it starts backing up. So working with state parks on removing that sediment, which will have some benefits for, for the flooding, but also is something that's been requested for a number of years by resource agencies because that big plug of sediment is blocking off the entire watershed from access by threatened and endangered salmon. So it's also a really important fisheries restoration project that will help with the, with solutions to the flooding as well. So if there was a, maybe a lasting message that I would hope to leave you with is that there was not a single silver bullet. There are a lot of entities that need to come together for dealing with source control of sediment, removing the, at least one shot of the sediment that's already deposited, and then looking at other longer-term solutions. And they sort of break down into certain responsibility areas. There are some that naturally lend themselves to the county, and we continue to be a partner to you on some of the upstream and downstream solutions as well. Thank you.
I just want to point out that this is, this is, is really is an integrated solution. Well, we're really talking about the health of this lagoon, that it is the, I know the federal authorities have said this is a primary that we could reintroduce Coho salmon, and it's, of course, an area that already has Steelhead, and like I said, Taiwata Gobies, and it obviously has other species, so it's integrated in a sense that it's not only the flooding, it's also the health of that lagoon. It is really a much bigger deal than just flooding. It is, it is the health of the, really what is, I think, a major watershed. And of course, you know, the up, when Kellex is talking about the upstream sediment, you know, we are working on that, or RCD is working on that with private landowners. One of the big ones is Post, to reconnect the floodplain with the creek. And the others, we have, we went up to the state of California, talked to John Laird, who's the Secretary of Natural Resources for the state of California, and we were able to get, for the first time, collaborative relationship with the state parks. So we think those three pieces of it are workable. The one thing I want to caution, when we talk about the causeway, we have to study the feasibility. We don't know if it's really possible, but we, it's, it's just the feasibility of it. So I think Jim is gonna talk more about that and the, the actual dredging of the, our right-of-way.
Thank you, Supervisor Horstley. President Groom, members of the board, Mr. Malpe and Mr. Byers. We have a couple of slides I wanted to talk about. But as Supervisor Horstley mentioned, the result of the study really identified a two-step process here. One is a short-term solution, which is dredging. And what we're talking about here is maintenance dredging, multiple-year dredging, underneath the bridge at Butino Creek, primarily within the county right-of-way. And as Supervisor Horstley also mentioned, the next step is to look at the feasibility of a causeway solution. So the slides you're about to see, there's just three, and I'll go through these fairly quickly, kind of drill down into what we're actually going to do. What you see there is kind of a close-up of Butino Creek, Pescadero Creek Road runs left to right across the screen. The road that runs to the south is Bean Hollow Road, and at that intersection there is the fire station that we've all heard about and that we'll be replacing soon at a different location, most likely. In order to dredge under the bridge, and this is a kind of an aerial view and an outline of where that dredging area is, we will need several approvals. In terms of agencies, we'll need to get permits or authorizations from the Coastal Commission, California Fish and Wildlife, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, the Army Corps of Engineers, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, NOAA's National Marine Fisheries Service, and we'll also need to get sequel clearance, and we anticipate that to be a mitigated neck deck.
That's all we need?
Hopefully.
Okay.
As you peel up, open the onion, you know, things come out. Anyhow, this, what this, what this will do is allow us to go in and excavate in the area that you're looking at there. Now, that drawing also shows property boundaries. The county right-of-way is offset in that area on Pescadero Creek Road, and it offsets right at the bridge. So unfortunately, we can't do this all within the county right-of-way. What you see is the dredging area. We'll also need to get access in there with heavy equipment. That area to be dredged is roughly about three thousand yards of material. I've, I understand that there's been outreach to private property owners about depositing that material onto their soil, and those discussions have been positive, which is a great savings to the cost of the project. One of the very expensive things to do is to haul this material away. And so by depositing that nearer to this location, it really cuts down on costs. So that's an interim measure. We are applying for a three-to-five-year maintenance, maintenance permit, or as long as they'll give us, because obviously, the next thing that we're going to look at is this causeway concept. This is something that is, is actually quite exciting, but quite a challenge. The drawing that you see there shows what this could be. The red section is, is an elevated section, which could actually be a bridge in that area. And the yellow or orange sections are essentially the conforms of the rising of the road to get to that location. So what we're asking your board to authorize is some funding to hire a firm to take a look at what that means, how we would construct that, and what the cost would be. There will be some challenges. As we mentioned, the fire station is likely going to be relocated. That will be a separate process, by the way. I know Ms. Peggy Jensen from the county manager's office is going to hold a public forum to talk about the programming and the location of that. That's separate. But as you can see, Bean Hollow Road, near the fire station, interacts with the elevated or what could potentially be an elevated portion of the roadway. So we have to figure out how that connection occurs. The other issue that'll be looked at is on the east side of the bridge, so to the right of the picture. There are some private residences there, and depending upon the elevation of the causeway, we have to look at how access is maintained for those properties. So those are going to be some interesting, some interesting challenges moving forward. But what we need to know is what it takes to do this. So that's really the next step. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and if there are none, I'll turn it over to Supervisor Horstley.
Questions? Okay.
I'm actually sort of curious. On that first part where you're doing sort of a mitigation measure, I assume that's what you're talking about. Unfortunately, I stepped right here. And you have all those agencies you need to go through to be able to do this. What's your timeframe for doing that and getting the ability to make some improvements there?
Through the president, we will be applying for permits at the end of February. So all those applications will be going into those agencies and also seeking approval. Agencies vary in terms of turnaround. Some are federal, some are state. We've been able to secure permits within six months with some agencies. Others take a bit longer. We have retained a consultant, and it is Horizon, I believe. I'm getting non. Horizon is going to be our, our permit consultant, and so they will be bird-dogging these agencies. So, you know, best case, it's six months. Worst case, it could be longer.
And, and the, a lot of these agencies you have to get permits from, you've been working with along the way. So I assume that some of them have given you any indication that maybe you're on the right track, so to speak?
So let me, let me try to give you an editorial viewpoint. We are on the right track, and all the agencies have been involved. The trick is getting the permitting staff, the actual people that issue the permits, to agree to. So I know that RCD has been heavily involved in working with those agencies. That information is filtering down. We're hoping for a quick turnaround. So this is a unique project in that there has been a huge amount of outreach to the, to the permitting agencies, as well as the community. So all the stars have lined up, and we're hoping to get these permits very quickly. I have to commend the work that the RCD has done in Supervisor Horstley's office, because it is hard work. There's a lot of agencies, and they've been able to get people together and get consensus. So every, all, everything that, that should have been done has been done. What happens next, though, is sort of out of our hands, but we're hoping for the best.
You know, I, I don't know if, I'm not really sure if we had the Coastal Commission, but I know we've, you know, I've convened meetings of all of the environmental agencies, all the permitting agencies, including the Army Corps of Engineers, and did talk to them about multi-year permits, and they have a national program. So we, I think we're fairly confident, no guarantees, but we're pretty confident that we've really crossed all the, our bridges with all of those different agencies, because they were involved in this process from the beginning.
I have one question about the, the causeway.
Sure.
So I, I know it's, you know, it's a preliminary sketch and all, but how high would that be? How are we, how are we thinking that would be?
Through the president. That's exactly why we're doing this.
Yeah.
This analysis. You know, really what we need to do is, is clear the water. I think what's been mentioned is, this is not going to solve the flooding problem, but this will keep the road open.
Yeah.
So there's still going to be flooding on either side of, of Pescadero Creek Road. It could be as easy as raising it, you know, five feet, six feet. You just need to pass the water and whatever debris that'll get under it. So it could be a fairly low bridge. But again, that's, that's why we're doing the study, to find out what exactly the heights are necessary. And in fact, the lower, the better, because that makes the conforms into the properties easier.
I could tell you that federal agencies have told me that they thought that the bridge was the major problem. Now, we think that they're, it's an oversimplification, but they, they are, one of the reasons that gives us a lot of belief that we're going to have fairly, I won't say easy, but, you know, the, the federal agencies are much more interested in this than state. And I think now that state agencies, because we have both of our state assembly people, as well as our state senator, as well as the Secretary for Natural Resources for the state of California, all are buying into this, and they all have the, the report. If there are no other questions, I'd like to make a motion to pass a resolution authorizing the appropriation transfer in the request in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty thousand from non-departmental services ERF reserves to engineering services for specific projects to address the flooding of Pescadero Creek Road.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good luck.
I'd like to thank all my colleagues.
Good luck.
You've had a number of memos from me over the years, and I really appreciate all your support on this project.
Okay, now, if there's, if there's anything else, we'll go to item number ten, which is board member reports. Supervisor Horstley?
Thank you. President Groom, I have two. One is Jerry C. Wagstaff. She is the sister of our DA. She has graduated St. Francis High School, received an Associate of Arts degree from Foothill College, and a Bachelor's degree from San Jose State, loyal follower of San Jose State Spartans. And she was an employee of Raycam Chemical Corporation, employed by Stanford Hospitals and clinics for about twenty-eight years. In any case, she has survived, as I said, for Dennis Wagstaff and his wife Kathy and their, their children. And then Steve Wagstaff and his brothers, James Wagstaff, as well. And the other is Raymond A. Garibaldi. Ray Garibaldi was a longtime resident of Colma. He was ninety-three years of age when he passed on. He's a graduate of Jefferson High School in Daly City, spent a year at UC Davis before the start of World War II. And then during the war, he was a mechanic... And then during the war, he was a mechanic repairing planes in Hawaii, joined the Sheriff's Department in nineteen fifty-four, and joined, and served for about twenty-five years. I remember him best when I was a Daly City police officer, and he was a bailiff. And he was always a very kind guy, and his, his gun always kind of was flopping around, not that it was loose or anything, but he was never the, you know, the most sartorially splintered deputy sheriff. But he was very, he was also active on the coast side. After he retired, he had horses and things, he, so he was a real mainstay on the coast side as well. So, in any case, they asked for a donation to the American Kidney Fund, so, great guy. Have great memories of him.
Thank you, Don.
I knew of him, Don, I didn't know about the gun, though, so I didn't. Anyway, I just wanted to report on a couple things. As you know, we've been working over the last couple of years on human trafficking and trying to eradicate that here in our county. And last week, I, along with Mike Caligy and David Silverman, met with the city managers here in San Mateo County, and we were trying to encourage them to adopt our illegal massage parlor ordinance that we have. And as you know, since it's been in place for us, we have closed eight massage parlors here in our county, mainly in the North Fair Oaks area. And obviously, we're looking at the illegal massage parlor activity, not the legal ones. But anyway, so, they seemed very receptive. I just sent this morning some letters and copies of that ordinance to all of the city managers, in hopes that they'll bring it forward to their councils soon. And I met, met with the sheriff, and he's offered to help put together a strike team or a task force, whatever it's going to take, to really help those cities. Obviously, a lot of them don't have the resources, so if we can create the strike team and eradicate these illegal massage parlors in other cities, we can do our best to help cut back on the issue of human trafficking here in our county. So, let's keep our fingers crossed, and we'll, we'll continue to work on that. Another thing I wanted to bring up is, this was another extraordinary year for the San Mateo County Children's Fund. This year, we distributed holiday gifts to over thirty-five hundred low-income and foster children served by our human services agencies and other agencies in the county. And I just wanted to say, shout out to Rebecca Ash and her crew at Holiday Central for doing such an outstanding job, once again, this year. And this one's for Don, our upcoming Age Well Drive Smart Seminar is going to be in your district on February eleventh at Senior Coast Siders.
I thought you wanted me to be in the class.
Well, you can come and say hello, for sure. But anyway, that will take place Wednesday, February eleventh, from nine to twelve at Senior Coast Siders on Main Street. And then I have two adjourned memories. The first one is Warren Hutchins. He passed away at the age of eighty-two after a brief illness. He's survived by his wife of sixty years, Carol, his daughter Janet Jacobs, his son, Robert Hutchins, and his several grandchildren and great-granddaughter. He was born in San Francisco, and he graduated from Lincoln, then went on to get a BS in Business Administration from the University of San Francisco. And then he attended the Pacific Coast Banking School at the University of Washington and completed with honors. And when he retired from the U.S. Naval Reserve after twenty-five years, and after retiring from the Federal Reserve Bank of San Francisco, he joined First National Bank. During the California, it's his vice president and manager of their main office. He was an avid golfer, loved the Niners, and took frequent trips, oh, he didn't like the Giants too good, there you go, and his frequent trips to Hawaii. And I think his latest joy was that he had a great-granddaughter. So, our sympathies go out to Carol and the rest of the family. I knew Warren very well through First National. Second is Frances Elizabeth Borkland. She was born in Illinois in nineteen thirty-one. She lived eighty-three wonderful, loving, and happy years. She worked as a public relations manager in the telecommunications industry for over twenty-five years, and was a longtime resident of San Mateo, California. She passed away on January eleventh, twenty fifteen, and was surrounded by all her loved ones. She will be deeply missed by her family, friends, and her colleagues. Thank you.
Supervisor Pine?
Thank you. I just wanted to flag a couple of events and updates. The Community Choice Aggregation workshops are happening on Wednesday. We have a morning session in South San Francisco, nine-thirty to noon, and an afternoon session in Redwood City from one-thirty to four. So, Supervisor Groom and I will be at these events. We're getting good turnout, or good, good response from the cities to come learn more about community choice aggregation. And in addition, at the Council of Cities meeting this Friday, Supervisor Groom and I will be in attendance as well, where we'll also be talking about community choice aggregation. So, getting the word out on that. I wanted to also mention to everyone that last night, I attended the San Mateo County School Boards Association, and we had a very useful and productive discussion about stress in schools and mental health issues in schools. Very sadly, a brilliant teenager lost his life to suicide earlier this month. Two students in Gunn High School lost their lives to suicide very recently. And I was very proud that we had taken some of the steps we have with things like the mental first aid class to educate the school community about warning signs and, and getting the word out about, about mental illness. You know, when we took some of those initiatives before, in, in my own mind, they were very much around, you know, preventing, and of course, they're impartly this, preventing, you know, any kind of a Newtown-type event. But they go much broader than that, in that they, they really do, do a lot of incredibly important education. So, Bob Kabai from the Behavioral Health and Recovery Services came and gave a nice presentation, and so, it was, you know, misery is making a difference there. And, you know, it's a sobering topic, but I, we have done a good job partnering with our schools on this, and I appreciate all my colleagues' work on that. And then, just a quick update on sea level rise initiatives, you might have seen in the consent calendar, that we have an expectation on Thursday of this week to receive a five-hundred thousand dollar grant from the Coastal Conservancy to work on a vulnerability assessment about the bayside and coast side north of Half Moon Bay, and Supervisor Horsley has come engaged in that as well, and with the assistance of Deborah Hurst. So, we're really happy to have that, both the funding and the partnership with the Conservancy, which should be formalized on Thursday. And, you know, it turns out the Conservancy has been a great partner on this issue. About a year and a half ago, they funded a study that we championed to look at the San Bruno Creek and the Colma Creek right north of the airport. And that grant was, we received some time ago, but we're having a, kind of a working session to get all the reports back from our consultants that have been studying those creeks and their vulnerabilities. That is happening this week as well. So, getting some, you know, trying to, trying to move a little more into action here on this issue. Thank you.
I'd like to adjourn in memory of May De La Calzada. Those of you that are familiar with the North Fair Oaks area, she had an auto repair shop on Middlefield Road, it was called, it's called Lady Parts, on the left-hand side there as you're traveling south. And the way she started that, she got a degree from USF in business in two thousand and six, and, but as a person growing up, she would see her mother get ripped off by auto repair shops that were, you know, taking advantage of women, basically. And so, she immersed herself in everything automotive. She took classes in automotive technology at Skyline College, earned a certificate as an automotive services repair shop manager, and she kept studying and studying, and finally opened Lady Parts Automotive Services in September two thousand and eight. She was a young woman and passed away late last year, and certainly North Fair Oaks, her family and the county will miss Ms. May.
Mr. Byers, would you report out for closed session, please?
Thank you, Madam President. No reportable action was taken by the board in closed session today.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll adjourn, and our next meeting will be February the tenth.